Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm Boston School Committee Chair Jerry Robinson. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I will ask my colleagues to unmute and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all. Because this is a remote meeting, I will ask Ms. Sullivan to please call the roll.
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Alkins?
President.
Thank you. Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
President.
Ms. Lopera?
President.
Mr. Metta? People joining us later. Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Present.
Mr. Tran?
Present.
Mr. O'Neill? He'll be joining us shortly. Ms. Robinson?
Present.
Thank you, we do have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion for the school committee to adjourn to adjourn to executive session with the purpose of discussing strategy with respect collecting bargaining with the Boston School Police Patrolmen Association and local union nineteen fifty-two Painters and Allied Trade District Council Number Thirty-Five Custodians. That discussion in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the committee's bargaining position. The committee will return to public session at six P M. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera?
Yes.
Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Oh, welcome. And Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
It's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. At this time, I'll ask my fellow members, the superintendent and staff, to log off from this public session and join the executive session using the Zoom link set out by Ms. Sullivan. We'll see you in a moment. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm Chairperson Jerry Robinson. The committee just returned from an executive session with the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Boston School Police Patrol Men's Association and Local Union nineteen fifty-two Painters and Allied Trade District Council Number Thirty-Five, also known as our custodians. Tonight's session is being shared live on Zoom. It will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. The recording will be available in all of the BPS languages. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, under the December seventh meeting link. The meeting documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The committee is pleased to be offering live simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cabo Veriano, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. We will now turn on the interpretation feature. Click the globe icon at the bottom of your screen to select your language preference. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you to everyone who signed up for public comment. Sign up for public comment close today at four thirty P M. Please make sure that you are signed into Zoom under the same name you use to sign up for public comment. You can use the Zoom tools to rename yourself so that committee staff will be able to recognize you when it comes time to call on you. Thank you for your cooperation. We will begin with the approval of minutes. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the November sixteenth school committee meeting as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera?
Yes.
Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The minutes are approved unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. We will now move on to superintendent's report. I present to you our Superintendent Mary Skipper.
Thank you, Chair. So first, I hope everyone had a wonderful holiday, you know, with their with their family and their friends. I hope we come back, you know, feeling refreshed and ready to head into these next three weeks as we move toward the end of the calendar year and in and just be able to enjoy all the celebrations and the things that make this time of year so much fun in our schools. I do recognize we have a full agenda tonight. We have an important presentation of our equity and bullying prevention work. We have a vote on grants and on schools who are on the list for renaming buildings and rooms. And we had two short presentations relative to newly ratified union contracts. Just a comment quickly on the labor piece. You know, we're really working hard and have been and will continue in the new year to finalize outstanding contracts. We have we have many of them. A superintendent coming in, I think it's important to to work with and treat our union labor unions fairly and respectfully. And part of that is making sure contracts are current. So we'll be working closely with the committee, not only tonight, but in the weeks to come, in the months to come, in the in the new year, to make that happen for our labor unions. I did want to address momentarily something that I know was on the media, and it was an incident that happened at the Murphy School in which there was somebody was found who was who who did not have home stability in one of the classrooms. Due to that situation, you know, we're currently assessing through our facility and operations all the protocols for accessing our buildings. To just remind, you know, the public and our committee, our school buildings are also community centers in some cases, athletic facilities in other cases that the public, the community uses. We welcome that, we love that. But as such, there's a lot of different partners that are coming in and out of the buildings. And so it's just very important that as we're reviewing protocols for safety, that we're doing that with our partners who are also using our buildings. Additionally, in this particular case, this has caused us to remind our area managers to do walkthroughs of our school buildings to ensure that the schools are safe and that they're secure at all times for students, staff, and families. This was something that happened overnight or during the evening hours and then was discovered in the morning. But nonetheless, we just it's a good reminder for us with our protocols to make sure that everybody's aware of them, both our own staff and those that are using our buildings, to make sure that our buildings are safe and secure for our staff, students, and families. In terms of the SIP, the Systemic Improvement Plan, last week, we submitted another set of deliverables to DESI, and these were related to our transformation schools. District worked with Afton Partners and U P D Consulting to complete what was called an equity analysis of funding specifically for the transformation schools and to see how they compared to the non-transformation schools. And they looked at similar size and programming. For contrast, we'll be receiving more specific recommendations following this analysis in January, and and we'll be sharing those with committee. We thank the Council of Great City Schools for their presentation and recommendations at the last school committee meeting relative to special education. You know, I think in all, there were there were ten kind of overall recommendations in depth, and they included, when you when you actually parse them out, about two hundred detailed bullet recommendations. Several of the recommendations we've already begun working on, specifically the recommendations on inclusion implementation, supporting our multilingual learners, excuse me, with disabilities, establishing and implementing an M T S S framework that's consistent across our schools and working with our finance team and academics team to ensure that we're budgeting and planning for an inclusive district. Just today, we had the Office of Special Education and the Office of Multicultural and Multilingual Education come together in the first of many meetings around professional development and how we are and will continue to support our multilingual learners with disabilities and take the recommendations that are in the plan to put them into action. We're also drafting a new contract now to identify external experts who will support the strong implementation of systemic inclusion for our multilingual students with disabilities. Additionally, we're taking critical steps that will be happening over the course of the next month, hiring in a senior advisor, I know I've spoken about this at the past committees, but hiring in a senior advisor to oversee implementation of the recommendations, really map them out, put an appropriate timeline, work with all the stakeholder groups, and a chief of education for which we're actually doing a national search to lead the future work of the Office of Special Education. We're also creating positions to oversee implementation of the district's M T S S. That's our multi-tiered systems of supports. We see this as foundational. The council emphasized it was foundational and that for us to build a healthy, inclusive district that M T S S foundation has to be sound. So we're creating positions to help supervise and oversee that process. We've also hosted two of four launches for our school-based inclusion planning teams. And this is with twenty-two school cohorts, so twenty-two of the schools who represent that first cohort of inclusion schools. We've been doing that, the launches for those and the planning. They'll be starting to make their school more inclusive to service all students in least restrictive environment next year. And so we are beginning that process, both in programmatic planning, but also continuing that in the budget process. And we're, of course, actively working with the Office of Special Ed, the Office of Multicultural and Multilingual Education, and our budget team, most importantly, to make sure that we're planning adequately to support and to fund a truly inclusive district. So, you know, lots of work that's begun with the plan. I look forward in the new year to presenting more comprehensively to the to the committee as we start to roll out big pieces of that of the work that's connected to the council's report. We also met with the Executive Board of SPEDPAC, which is a critical piece, you know, so that we're collaborating with our families, with the larger community to continue the implementation and in mindset shift and culture shift that has to happen in our district to really make BPS an inclusive district. And so we 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 thank SPEDPAC for their ongoing conversation and collaboration with us. In fact, tomorrow, we're meeting with the E L L Task Force as well, who will be partners in our work with O M M E and the strategic plan. And next month, excuse me, cold, next month, we'll hear from the council about two other reports that we've been we've been waiting for. One is on school safety and the other is on transportation. And so we'll be sharing those out as we get them and review them through the council with school committee. Later this evening, you know, we'll hear an update from the Office of Equity. Can underscore enough how the the Office of Equity, they just do such important work every day to support our students and our staff. One specific update that I wanted to provide you that I I spoke about at the last school committee meeting, and it has to do with Attorney Natasha Tidwell's ongoing investigation. And this came from a letter that had been given to me about from the Concerned Educators of Color around specific areas of concern within the BPS and potential despair treatment. So I just I wanted to take a moment to provide a little clarity regarding the scope of that work, the scope of Attorney Tidwell's investigation. Because I think there has been confusion around what she is and is not investigating. So she's investigating allegations that there's a that there has been a disproportionate number of educators of color who have been placed on administrative leave and or investigated, and that such disproportion disproportionality has been or could be the result of bias. That is specifically the scope of her investigation. She's not investigating the overall racial breakdown of all investigatory meetings that BPS holds. Because I think, as I shared the last time, BPS doesn't track all I M's. Investigatory meetings, they're not all tracked because not they don't involve necessarily administrative leave when they don't all result in discipline. An investigatory meeting is really just an employee's opportunity to respond in a school or at the district level to an allegation made against them. And that could be by a student, by a parent, by another staff member. And so that is really what an investigatory meeting is. It's just it's it's really it's we have to do it because it we have to, by due process, allow our employees an opportunity to consult with their union or with their legal counsel before actually being investigated by the supervisor. So we don't currently track the investigatories that happen because most of them don't they just they don't result in the discipline piece. Attorney Tidwell is also not investigating, or I should say, re-investigating, previous allegations to determine whether the investigation was biased. Employees, and this is in a in a this has happened in a positive way since I sent my my letter out to all staff. Any employees who believe that an investigative investigatory finding was racially biased, you know, or not factually supported, they they can directly challenge that, and there's a mechanism to do that. And and so that that has a, you know, they have the ability to file with Equity a complaint. They have an ability to go to M C A D. So they have other vehicles to do that. But that is not something that Attorney Tidwell would be involved in. There's a separate process through Equity for that to happen. And so anyone that has, you know, since getting my letter had concern about something that had happened to them, they've been they've been working with our Equity Department around that. What Attorney Tidwell is reviewing is whether there's a disproportionate number of central office managerial and school leaders of color who've been investigated or placed on leave. And if that disproportionality exists, whether there's evidence to say that it was the result of bias. So that is the scope for which she is working on with our legal department. And, you know, Attorney Mackey is here tonight. Were there to be questions on this? But we just felt that it was important to clarify that piece. I've also, you know, asked through Attorney Mackey that Attorney Tidwell, that she be very thorough in in her review. You know, and and I would say to committee that what we have the sense of is that because it's a thorough investigation that it will take time, and that's the reason that it is taking time from the time that we contracted with her. In the immediate kind of based on the feedback I that I received from a meeting with one of the representatives from the Concerned Educators of Color, I've asked my team to draft an employee rights letter to explain the investigatory process, the disciplinary process, and to ensure every employee knows and understands their rights and understands what the investigatory and disciplinary process involves at the onset of any kind of an investigation. What was made clear to me was that there was might be some confusion in that area as I met with the one of the representatives in that it was really important, and I fully agree from a due process standpoint, that our employees should always be clear on what an investigatory and a disciplinary part of the process entails and what their right at each step is. So our folks are working on drafting that letter that will be sent out so that everybody can be clear on that, has an opportunity to ask questions about it. And the letter is going to be sent over the next few weeks after the new year. So that is that's already happening. I also just want to emphasize that that as a district, you know, it's required that we investigate all credible allegations of misconduct by any BPS staff member. And that just ensures that staff adhere to BPS policies as well as the state and the federal laws, the government school district. So that is just our it's our legal obligation to to make sure that that happens. It's also a priority to me as a superintendent to create a safe and inclusive environment for all employees. And that's why the letter that I received was so important for me to feel that I needed to act upon it. You know, investigating and responding to allegations of staff misconduct of any form, they're just they're they're critical components in making sure that in our school buildings, in our central offices, that we have, we, you know, we sustain the the public trust in in BPS of staff with staff, staff with supervisors, and the public with us. So, you know, equally critical is, you know, maintaining, as I said in my letter, to to staff, you know, a discrimination-free workplace. And that that has to happen, you know, by making sure that we, as a district, respond to any allegations of employee misconduct and discipline and any discipline that's issued is free from bias. Those are just underpinnings of a healthy district. So, you know, I just I wanted to update school committee. I wanted to share that with the public. And, you know, we'll keep keep you abreast as this evolves. But I just underscore how important we see this to investigate, that we are taking all the necessary steps, and at each point, we'll provide clarity as we go through that process. In terms of, you know, the last couple of weeks, it's 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 been, you know, just a wonderful celebration of so many different activities and events in in BPS. You know, I'm really appreciative of so many of our community partners. I've had the opportunity, you know, to go out and just take part and see so many of our strong partnerships and what it's meaning to our students and to our schools and our staff. You know, partners like the Symphony Orchestra, who performed at the Burke Auditorium, and they literally brought world-class art and music, you know, to the community. I also had the opportunity to participate in a food drive at the United Way for Thanksgiving with a lot of the volunteers from East Boston High School and just to be part of the community for the the morning and to see our families so happy to be together, you know, in 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 that sense of community and in the process to to get some things that they could go back and share with their families for Thanksgiving. I also had opportunity to attend, and I just want to celebrate, one of our partners, Advestors. They helped us to secure one point six five million dollar anonymous donation, which was given to support arts education and programming across the East Boston schools. And this was at the the Gile School did the actual celebration. And I did get a chance to see school committee member Lopera and Vice Chair O'Neill. They were there at the announcement, and we got to hear the second graders from the Gile just participate and sing and fill the auditorium with beautiful music. And in that, that's just in one example of a support that Advestors has brought to us this this current year to expand our music programming and to really have the ability for vertical programming throughout the East Boston schools, culminating, as it was was said at East Boston, where they're they're going to have a marching band. And there's lots of private lessons that are going to be provided to our students through these dollars of this anonymous donor. So just a wonderful morning there. I also had the opportunity to attend the Red Sox and Mass Mutual Foundations came together in a special partnership to build on work that had been happening through the Hernandez. And this was using Fenway Park as a learning lab field where they use the stadium and the field based on connecting activities that the teachers have been designing in math, science, language arcs, and social studies as a way to have students leave their school environment and go and see the park and experience it and be able to connect their learning to that process. And through the support of the Red Sox Foundation and the Mass Mutual Foundation coming together, the the plan is that this be almost a rite of passage experience for our sixth graders throughout the city as we sort of build this out over the years. So our Hernandez students certainly enjoyed being there and that opportunity, and they were the they were the highlight of the day, I think, for everyone to see how excited they were. I'd also like to acknowledge the amazing BPS high school students from Boston Green Academy who presented at an environmental town hall with students from in and around the Boston area last week as part of the festivities of the Earthshot Prize. You know, BGA, as you guys know, is deeply focused on sustainability, preparing the next generation of students as diverse leaders for college and green careers. And students from the Henderson School were also in attendance. School students from East Boston High School were also in attendance. And the event featured Mass Lieutenant Governor-elect Kim Driscoll. There was there were officials there from the U S Environmental Protection Agency Association. Rosemary Inobakiare was there, and the Earthshot Prize CEO Hannah Jones was there. And so BGA, you know, definitely represented BPS well, and it was a really unique opportunity for the students to participate in something that, as we know, captured our city for several days. I I had the opportunity to go to the N I A S C conference for which N I A S C is the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. It's through which we do our accreditations for our secondary schools, and I've had a longstanding relationship with them as the high school soup. I had the chance, they held their regional conference downtown, and I had the the chance to go and speak to the educators who were from all around New England and actually the world because it's actually an accreditation that is recognized worldwide. And it was it was amazing to see our O'Brien Choir participate. They sang the Star Fangled Banner and and interacted with the the members of the of the the council, and everybody just thought they did such a wonderful job. We also had one of our own educators, Dr. Bruce Pompran, from Tech Boston, who was who was received an award for service from the I A S C for his many, many years of supporting BPS work in the I A S C. And so it was just a wonderful time to to celebrate our own as they brought the region together. I also had a chance to, and 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 when I say so many different events, I mean, these are just events that just highlight all of the amazing things that are happening in our district every day. And and that's why I just want to take the time to speak to them so that the public hears about them and you you realize them as well. But I had on that very rainy evening last week, the McFarland Scholar Dinner was held at Northeastern. And this was through our R C D office in Equity. And each of the teachers, the BPS teachers or pairs or social workers were receiving twenty thousand dollars scholarship to further their education in getting and obtaining another degree or certificate. So it could have been a para who was looking to become a teacher and was going through the master's program and to get a certification, or I meant a social work, there were social workers there. There are teachers there who are furthering their education with a master's degree. And this was all sponsored through the McFarland Scholarship. And so every year, they give ten scholarships to our educators to fully that really support this next step for them in their development. And Northeastern is a deep partner with us in this. So it was just wonderful to see it and to just have an opportunity to spend time with some of our educators who have gone through the program or who Or who were going into the program for the first time. In fact, I, the next day I got to see several of the educators through some of my visits to schools. And see them in their classroom with their students. So just a very exciting time and. Just a very proud time, I think, in BPS to see all the different. You know, genius and talents of our students, the the passion and the hard work of our educators. As we head into the to the end of the year, the end of the calendar year and in the holiday season. So with that, I, it is, it is actually, this is one of my favorite things to to have happen. And that is the educator of the year. This is, this is the opportunity for us to be able to celebrate. Some of our educators who have been selected by their, by peers, by by BTU. Within the city and within BPS as an educator of the year. This year, tonight, we will be celebrating seven of them. And we will be having some of their school leaders present. To be able to share a little bit about all of the terrific work for which they're being recognized tonight. We really hold these educators up in the highest pedestal, right, of levels of like professionalism, performance. Positive peer culture in the buildings. You know, they really are being selected because they represent the model. And I had the the fun of being able to call them. Some of them had found out because they had been already presented with the certificate, but. And I did get to speak with with them. And and to just really congratulate them and and tell them how fortunate we are in BPS. To have such dedication and such talent. That's that's impacting our students on a on a daily basis. The educators really come from all walks, right? It's it's teachers, it's social workers, it's paraprofessionals, a nurse. Librarians, all related service and and guidance counselors. And to be considered for the award, the nominees, they had to really undergo. An extensive vetting process that happens between BTU and BPS. There's hundreds of nominations that happen. And and then there's a large committee that consists of BTU, BPS and the City Department. Staff members. And it's, you know, the members of the committees, they go out, they actually visit the schools. And they present them with their certificate and and they get a swag bag. And so I I also just wanted to thank that the BDF, the Boston. Educational Development Fund, they they actually helped make this possible. And they help as one of the Mechanism Sports. I just want to thank them and BTU for their contributions and partnership in it. The Boston Celtics will also be honoring this group. And so we'll have an opportunity to to go out on the court. At a game later in January to appropriately celebrate these fine educators. And so at this point, I'm going to. Not conclude my report, I'm going to hand it over to Jerome Doherty. So that he can introduce each of our educators of the year as well as their school principal. I will be happy to take questions at the end after the conclusion of all of the celebrations. So Jerome.
Thank you Superintendent Skipper and good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to invite each school leader to read the bio for their honoree from their school. I would welcome now also each honoree to be on the screen as their bios being read. So please turn your camera on so we can recognize you. First up is Leslie Gant, Principal of the Joseph Tynan Elementary School. And our honoree is Salinas Rodriguez.
Good evening Superintendent Skipper, Chair Robinson, school committee members, colleagues and all attendees. My name is Leslie Gant and I am the proud principal of the Joseph Tynan Elementary School in South Boston. It is truly my honor to share information about the two thousand twenty-two educator of the year. Ms. Salinas Rodriguez. She is a lifelong educator who was truly drawn to working with special education students. As a native of St. Croix, U.S. Virgin Islands, she decided to come to Boston to find a better opportunity. Prior to being a teacher of special needs students, she worked in before and after school programs. In two thousand twelve, Salinas began her work as an applied behavior analyst at the Joseph Tynan Elementary School. That was also the year I started at the Tynan. And from the beginning of her tenure at the Tynan, I was truly in awe of her commitment and knowledge of content in her students. In two thousand twenty, I approached Ms. Rodriguez and told her I believed it was time for her to become a teacher. She was initially reluctant, but finally agreed. And as they say, a star was born. Salinas has an unwavering commitment to fairness and equity and truly believes that every child is capable. Her greatest joy is adapting materials to provide unfettered access to content for every student. Ms. Rodriguez is inspired and motivated by her students every single day. And celebrates each accomplishments her students make. The Tynan is honored to be the home of a two thousand twenty-two BPS educator of the year. Thank you so much, Salinas, for all that you are to the entire community.
Thank you, Principal Gant, and congratulations again, Salinas. I'd like to next welcome Dr. Michelle Eisen Smith. From the Horace Mann School for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing. And our educator of the year is Mary Simmons.
Hi, this is the sign language interpreter. We need to have Dr. Michelle spotlight too, please. Terrific, thank you. Hi, my name is Dr. Michelle Eisen Smith. I am the proud head of school at the Horace Mann School for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing. A dual language program in American Sign Language and English. I am humbled and honored to be asked. By the school committee and the superintendent, I appreciate you taking the time to honor our. Educators of the year. And our phenomenal educator is Mary Silvestri Simmons. Mary is an American Sign Language teacher for the elementary age team. She's a teacher facilitator at Horace Mann. Building from over a decade of teaching the visual arts. For K through twelve deaf children. She's also developed multimedia curriculum. Mary's working with the HMS team to develop an ASL WIDA standard. And a deaf-centered by literacy core humanities curriculum. That incorporates deaf studies, social studies, American Sign Language and English literature. And a multicultural perspective. As a deaf and native signer from a deaf family of educators and coaches. These professional interests intersect with a personal investment in the well-being and growth of our deaf community. We are so proud of Ms. Mary. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Dr. Eisen Smith, and congratulations again, Mary. Next, I'd like to introduce Paul Kennedy, School Leader of the Joseph Lee K to Eight School. Introducing Andrea Livisie.
Good evening, school committee members, Chairperson Robinson, Superintendent Skipper and all attendees of this meeting. It is my distinct honor to introduce two thousand and twenty-two educator of the year. Award honoree from the Joseph Lee K to Eight, Ms. Andrea Livzie. Ms. Andrea Livzie has been an educator within Boston Public Schools for the last ten years, teaching within ABA strand classrooms. Currently, she is our social wellness teacher at the Joseph Lee K to Eight. Where she focuses on social emotional learning and mindfulness with students in grades pre-K through eight. She is an active member in the Joseph Lee community and is constantly seeking to improve student outcomes through activities such as fundraising. Grant writing, she was recently awarded the Whole Kids Grant. And partnering with local organizations. For example, she recently partnered with the Green City Growers to start the This is the Way We Grow Project. Excuse me, garden program at the Joseph Lee School. Andrea loves being a part of the BPS community and truly loves bringing new opportunities for growth to each student she works with. She is extremely grateful to have the chance to bring social emotional learning and mindfulness to the students of the Joseph Lee. And looks forward to all her future endeavors in the community. The Joseph Lee is both lucky and grateful to have such a dynamic educator as part of our team and so proud of her accomplishment. Congratulations, Ms. Livzie.
Thank you very much, Principal Kennedy, and congratulations again, Andrea. I'd now like to invite Principal Joseph Foley from the Kilmer K to Eight School, Joyce Kilmer K to Eight School. And his honoree. Stephen Mook.
Like to remind everyone to please slow down for the interpreters. Thank you.
Thank you for that reminder. Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Joseph Foley. I'm the proud principal of the Kilmer K to Eight. It is an honor and a privilege to be here this evening to introduce and congratulate our math teacher, Mr. Stephen Mook as a BPS educator of the year. Prior to working as a math teacher in BPS for nearly the last fifteen years. Steve Mook was a principal and teacher at schools in Hawaii and Lawrence. He received his BA in History from Williams College and his PhD from Brandeis University in Comparative History. Steve, like the rest of his family, is very involved in BPS public schools. His wife is a BPS teacher and both of his daughters have attended BPS schools since kindergarten. Steve strives to create a learning environment with high expectations for student learning. And works hard to provide each student with what is needed to succeed. Whether it be supporting students with foundational knowledge or pushing students to go beyond grade level learning. He is just as happy in the classroom as he is in the schoolyard playing games with our students. Last year, Steve piloted a program for seventh graders to learn both seventh and eighth grade math. To allow them to take high school algebra for their eighth grade year. Mr. Mook is a passionate, dynamic, student-centered educator. Who works extremely hard to ensure that all of his students meet their academic and social emotional potential. Mr. Mook continues to meet students where they are at. Offers effective supports, mentoring and check-ins while providing a safe, welcoming and rigorous classroom learning environment. Mr. Mook not only supports our middle school scholars, but he also supports a team of adult learners. Mr. Mook mentors our new middle school teachers. Facilitates our middle school PLC and is a constant source of guidance and knowledge for all of his peers. On a personal note, I truly appreciate Mr. Mook's continued support, his open and honest feedback and his leadership. Due to all of his hard work and his positive impact on our school. We are able to continue to provide all our students with a world-class education at the Kilmer K to Eight School. Thank you, Steve, and congratulations on this well-deserved recognition. Great job, Steve.
Thank you, Principal Foley, and congratulations again, Stephen. Now I'd like to invite Principal Mark Silva of the Harvard Kent Elementary School. And our honoree Jenny Wu.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Silva, proud interim principal at the Harvard Kent School in Charlestown. And I'm so happy to present to you tonight, Ms. Jenny Wu, as the BPS Power Professional Educator of the Year. Ms. Wu is a paraprofessional in one of our K one classes. It's important to note that she's a proud BPS graduate. All right, and we would love to have more graduates, BPS graduates like her at the Harvard Kent over time. She is also an early childhood and education graduate from UMass Boston and has been working in early education for eight years. She has long appreciated being part of the BPS community. Having attended BPS from kindergarten through twelfth grade. She truly appreciates working in BPS and uses her perspectives and experiences to do amazing work. She enjoys working with children and is particularly interested in building strong and trusting relationships with them and their families. She posts a lot on Parent Square, right? So she really does goes above and beyond to communicate, include, right, and interest our families. She has a passion for watching students learn, achieve and grow. When Ms. Wu learned of this honor. Characteristically, she was surprised. She said there are so many people at the school and likely in the city, I'm sure, right, who do great work. But she wonderfully, wonderfully represents the Harvard Kent staff and is a completely deserving winner. All of our staff agree. She describes building relationships as central in her work. The community she intentionally creates of connection, inclusion, safety and caring. Of high expectations for and belief in students. That is the community we intentionally create across the school. Her foundational community and academic work makes a huge difference. Thank you, Ms. Wu, for your wonderful work. For truly helping to to build the foundation for our school's wonderful learning community. All the parents say so too. Okay, congratulations, Jenny.
Thank you, Principal Silva, and congratulations again, Jenny. I'd like to invite Head of School Jerlene John from Excel High School. To introduce Suzie Renz.
Good evening, everyone. I am Jerlene John, Head of School of Excel High School in South Boston. It is my honor and pleasure to introduce Suzie Renz, Educator of the Year. Suzie is a vital member of the Excel High School community. Where she serves as our school nurse. With a wealth of knowledge and expertise. Nurse Renz approaches every interaction with students and families. With the utmost care, respect and compassion. Since joining the Boston Public Schools in two thousand and eleven. She has contributed significantly to the advancement of a strong supportive school environment. By helping to creatively meet the needs of all students. Whether it is through her advocacy, problem-solving or decision-making capabilities. She consistently leads with student needs at the forefront. Nurse Renz's commitment to continuous learning and professional growth. Has greatly benefited our school community. We are particularly grateful for her strong and steady guidance throughout the challenging pandemic times. In addition to her role as a school nurse. Suzie has served as the school-based homelessness liaison. And was instrumental in bringing Katie's closet to Excel High School. She is the bullying prevention and intervention specialist. The wellness champion for the Empowering Teens Through Health Program. The lead facilitator of the School-Based Health and Wellness Council. A member of the School-Based Crisis Response Team. And a member of the School Operations Team. She is an awardee of the Excellence in School Wellness Award from the Boston Public Schools. Suzie is a proud graduate of multiple colleges and universities. And has successfully obtained a Doctorate of Nursing Practice Degree. A Master of Education Degree in School Nurse Education. A Bachelor of Science in Nursing Degree. And an Associate in Science and Nursing Degree. Suzie, we are grateful for your investment in the students and staff at Excel High School. The honor of educator of the year is well-deserved. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, Head of School John, and congratulations again, Suzie. I'd like to now invite Megan McGoldrick, Principal of the Lila G Frederick Pilot Middle School. To introduce her educator of the year, Giannina Sanchez.
Thank you, Jerome. Thank you Superintendent Skipper, Chairperson Robinson and the School Committee. My name is Megan McGoldrick and I am the proud interim principal of the Lilly G Frederick Pilot Middle School. It is my honor to be before you this evening to recognize Giannina Sanchez as one of the two thousand twenty-two Boston Educators of the Year. Ms. Sanchez has been a social worker in BPS for twenty-two years, the majority of which have been at the Frederick. Ms. Sanchez is deeply committed to the Dorchester community where she has served various school communities, including Dorchester High School, the King, the McCormick Middle School, and for nearly seventeen years has been an exemplary social worker at the Frederick in Grove Hall. Nina is passionate about creating opportunities that empower students and their families to proactively navigate school and community experiences. Educators like Nina are the most priceless gift. She embodies professionalism, warmth, consistency, excellence and humility. She is consistently solution-oriented and always brings joy and laughter to the hardest days. To say that Nina deserves to be an Educator of the Year is an understatement. She is truly an exemplary educator and we owe her a debt of gratitude for her more than twenty years of outstanding service to the students, families and staff of Boston Public Schools. It is my privilege to recognize her for this well-deserved honor and personally to thank her for her partnership and support. On behalf of BPS and the Frederick Community, congratulations, Nina.
Thanks very much, Principal McGoldrick, and congratulations again, Giannina. What a wonderful roster of honorees. Please join me in celebrating these amazing educators. And Superintendent Skipper, I will hand it back to you.
And thank you, Jerome. I just also want to thank you for your work and OHC's work in, uh, you know, in just pulling this together so that we could appropriately uh, thank and celebrate all of these wonderful educators. So thank you so much for your work as well. So Chair, that concludes my report and I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you. Now opening up to the committee for questions. Ms. LaPera.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you Superintendent Skipper. I don't have a question. I just wanted to congratulate again um, the teachers and educators that were mentioned. My children caught that this was happening and they were at the edge of their seats waiting for their teacher to be named. Um, and so just to say that I'm so glad that we're recognizing um folks and just knowing that there are so many other unsung heroes um, in our schools and in our classrooms every single day. So an immense amount of gratitude from myself and my children.
Thank you. Dr. Elkins.
Uh, yes, I actually just want to echo those sentiments. Um, and also as the, as a member, um, who was actually on the, the, the committee um, and you know, heard the, the various profiles and read through various profiles and hearing the, the, the stories, um, you know, we're only getting real, like I can say like only a snapshot of the great work uh, that, you know, that I, that I had the pleasure of hearing about and not, you know, and told from the, the impact told from family members, from fellow teachers, uh, administrators. Um, so really just all around support for the great work that, um, that goes on. Um, and it's just great that as we continue to think about how we need to do things better, it's always good to have moments like these where we, we recognize and um, celebrate the, the great work of those that are dedicated and this is a shout out to everybody um, that are appreciative of the work that you do and showing up every day. So. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, it's, um, it's nice like this that I really regret that we're not back in person because I would so love to have each of these Educators of the Year up, up with us and receiving plaques and, and for them to truly get the applause and gratitude that they absolutely deserve. There are, you know, I was thinking there were about five nights of the, of the year at school committee meetings when I really appreciate the opportunity to give praise and thanks to folks that went up, graduating BSAC seniors come and visit with us. I always loved that night, um, when the teachers who have received national certifications. Uh, that's a big deal as well. When our new school leaders come and join us and get introduced to the committee. Um, uh, the, the night that we honor those who have received the doctorate, which is the highest in, in education that you can get. Um, and then especially tonight, our Teachers of the Year. So I, the Educators of the Year, because it includes our paraprofessionals, et cetera. So I just extend my warmest congratulations to all of you and as Dr. Elkin said, I, I did also get to serve in a past selection committee. So I know how hard the selection committee works and how hard it is to narrow down because we have so many outstanding educators across our district. And it's nice at this time of year to be able to just stop and honor them and say thank you for the difference you are truly making every single day in your classroom for our students and their families. So congratulations to all of you.
Thank you. Mr. Tran.
Uh, I joined my colleagues in echoing uh, the congratulation and the appreciation to all Educators of the Year. Thank you for all your commitment and hard work in advancing um, the education of Boston children. Thank you. Uh, I do have, uh, well, regarding the Superintendent's report, I, I have one specific question. Uh, that is regarding the investigation uh, brought on by the letter. I understand that. I, I may have missed it, but you know, I understand that um, with the investigative uh, hearing. Uh, that is taken place with different um, alleged complainants. Um, I don't know whether there are named complainants or not, but just for the sake of clarity, I understand that the letter uh, did mention several um, people, several educators, staff that were affected by, by um, by certain kind of uh, conduct, alleged misconduct regarding disciplinary procedure. Um, my question is, uh, do we as the members of this committee will get copies of uh, the final uh, dispositive finding on the investigations, uh, on the investigative uh, hearing, uh, taken into consideration all those legally required um, uh, all, all those legal requirements such as redactions of names or uh, whatever personal information that, that, that are, that may be at issue. Um, do we have? Will we have a copy of the finding? That's one. Um. Is there any uh, uh, is there going to be some kind of uh, um, dispositive finding from the Commissioner's Office that may involve us? Given the fact that if that case or that letter is going to be filed lately, later on in any uh, legal forum, we may have been named as well. So is there going to be any kind of um, uh, consultation or any kind of um, uh, discussion, deliberation that will involve us as well?
Sure. So I'm gonna, oh, sorry.
Now that's, that's the meat of my question. Thank you.
Okay, uh, so three, so I'm gonna actually ask Ms. Mackey to just, from a perimeter standpoint, share it. Um, but what is being, uh, what, what Ms. Tidwell is investigating uh, isn't particular uh, people or cases. It was a general um, concern around a disparity. So that is what she is investigating. Um, and Ms. Mackey, I don't know if you, um, in terms of the sharing out of the report and the mechanism, if you can answer that.
Well, with respect to the investigation, the scope of the investigation is whether a disproportionate number of uh, Central Office managerial employees of color um, have been placed on administrative leave and or investigated and whether uh, if there is a disproportionate number, whether that, um, whether there is evidence that that is a result of bias. That is the scope of Attorney Tedwell's investigation. She is not re-investigating um, prior investigations to determine whether there was bias. Um, Attorney Tedwell is not investigating whether uh, investigatory meetings are being held as a result of bias. There are uh, several different uh, forums available for any employee who feels that investigatory meeting is, has been launched um, as a result of bias or uh, an investigation is um, not supported by facts and is bias-based. So uh, I think it's important for the district to clarify the scope of that. So the expectation of what uh, Attorney Tedwell's report uh, will be if it was, if it is released by the district is confined to that scope.
Okay. Are there others? Mr. Cardet Hernandez.
Um, wanted just congratulations to, to all of the recipients this evening. It's, it is fantastic to, to hear about your impact and to celebrate you tonight. Um, having been a teacher myself, it is, uh, it's the hardest job and it is, it's a, it's a special, it's a special evening that we get to celebrate you and, and um, and I echo uh, Ms. Lopera. Um, I have a feeling my son is also like wondering if his teacher is, is in the mix too. And so this is very special and there's so many folks we couldn't recognize tonight. The system is great, but uh, you guys are awesome. So thank you so much for your service and for, for your work. Um, I, I do have a question um, for the superintendent and this is about past presentations and just curious if there's any updates for us because I think it was alluded to during your presentation this evening. Um, you came to us uh, with uh, the sort of, some of the shades of a, of a plan around the work we're going to be doing for multilingual learners. Um, and the same is true around the sort of possible journey we're going to be taking after we, the ratification of the BTU contract around transformation um, in our special education uh, programming and the planning that individual schools were going to take on. I'm curious if there are any updates for us this evening around those two work streams that obviously um, in the presentation here, we're separate, but in many ways we're about whole school and system transformation. I'm curious um, what you have for us and, and when we're going to hear more.
Sure. So um, is part of the, is part of my report tonight, I was speaking about um, particularly like with special education, the areas that we've begun to, to start to do that work. Um, and so it ranged from MTSS and, and kind of adopting the framework um, and ensuring that that's something that for all schools, training can, um, can happen for next year as a foundation um, to specific work that's starting to happen between committees uh, such as special, Special Education Office, such as M O M E Office uh, eh, around our students, uh, MLE, MLE students with disabilities. Um, so it, it, the work has begun. Um, when the senior advisor and uh, I'll ask Dr. Chen to come in because I know that they're very close um, to um, on the senior advisor side. Once that person comes in, um, one of the first pieces is going to be mapping out the timeline, the big buckets of work and how they're working and dovetailing together between the two offices. Um, a big piece of this right now, most immediate is the budget. Um, because we need to make sure that the budget is going to support the inclusion work that is being visioned for the twenty-two schools in the first cohort. But more importantly, the foundational work that needs to happen for the other schools so that as additional cohorts come through, we know how to prepare them. So that can range everything from the MTSS piece to interventionist, reading specialist. I mean, it, it kind of runs the gamut. Uh, so Dr. Chen, do you want to just, is there anything else of um, specificity that you'd like to um, share with committee? Um, you know, tonight to just give examples of further work that's being done more than what I referenced in my notes?
Sure. Um, I think there are some key hires that we've been working on. Um, one of them being um, the senior advisor for special education whose primary role will be to um, track and support and ensure that the recommendations are implemented. So we actually have been um, coordinating a way to um, share broadly what is happening with the implementation because as Superintendent said, parts of the ten recommendations were already in process prior to the recommendations being made and some have been accelerated. And one of the um, areas of feedback that we got was that the, the document itself is hard to digest for families and for the general public. And so what we're trying to do is make sure that we can better update you and it certainly is a meeting all into itself. Um, and so um, I'm happy to take direction from the chair and the superintendent as to how we want and when that will be scheduled so that we can really give its justice in terms of the full report. I will say that an area that we're looking very closely at is certainly our multilingual learners with disabilities. And really um, adding some supports um, and some consultants in that work. Um, the, the two departments have been working together to make sure that we can bring in some expertise around that and leverage some of even our own current expertise. So I just would take advice from the chair and the superintendent as to how you want to continue.
Yeah. So through, through you, uh, through your chair, I'll take uh, the first on that. I, I think what we want to be able to do is get a couple of these big pieces in place so that what we're presenting uh, to school committee as a next update is more comprehensive. Um, you know, as, as you can see from like the two hundred recommendations, just parsing them out and then figuring out the timing for each of them and then what step, what has to happen for the timing to work, uh, what the fiscal support is, which departments it intersects with. Uh, it's, you know, it's comprehensive and that's I think why Dr. Hart spoke about we need to move with urgency, but also we need to be comprehensive in our approach about it and recognize like how intertwined the work is across departments, across our systems, like enrollment and transportation. So that's what we're attempting to do, but with all due speed. We're, we're, we're trying to fast track that as much as possible. So I would see this as something um, that perhaps alongside one of the other council reports during January, that we give a more comprehensive update um, specifically on OME strategic plan and specifically on special education. As I think that that's, um, I think that's what Member Cardet, uh, Hernandez is referring to.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm out of time, but I will circle back to just two more questions once everyone else has gone.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tran.
Um, sorry to circle back again, but I, I just a quick question, um, short question, still relating to the investigation. Um, what do we expect as a timeline of, of the, the investigation? And what do we expect as the kind of uh, documentation that we may receive from the investigation itself?
So I'm going to, at three, I'm going to ask Attorney Mackey. So I'm going to, through your chair, I'm going to ask Attorney Mackey since legal office is overseeing it.
You just repeat the question for me, please.
Timeline for the investigation and what, what type of report we can expect back? Like what would be the, the range of findings?
Well, the finding would be confined to the scope of the investigation, whether, first of all, there is a, there has been a disproportionate number of managerial central office staff, employees of color that have been either investigated or placed on administrative leave. That's finding number one. Finding number two would be whether there is evidence that that disproportionate number is a result of bias. This would be in an attorney-client privileged report for the district to review. To the extent that the findings include recommendations as to how to remedy anything, if there is an adverse finding, those recommendations would be reviewed by the district and if possible, implemented. Unfortunately, I don't, I don't know what the timeline is, but hopefully this school year for sure, I do not anticipate having it before the end of the, the calendar year.
So the attorney clients privilege that, that you're stating here, that you're referring here is between your, I, I mean, between the attorney who was hired to, to, to perform the investigation and the school itself and, and the, and the adminis, administration of the school itself, right?
That's correct, the school committee and the outside council that's been hired, there is an attorney-client relationship there. And so the report itself would be an attorney-client privileged report.
So, so the client here also include us?
We're the client, yes, the school committee, yes, the superintendent, the Boston Public Schools is the client.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Cardet Hernandez, I'll come back to you.
Yes, I have two questions as a follow-up and one is just around enrollment. And this again may be another agenda item, but I want to acknowledge, you know, the conversation we have had previously sort of around enrollment and projections, but obviously some of that information became more public the last few weeks, maybe the last week. With just over, you know, 48,000 students in the system and seeing that, you know, what we had anticipated of continual decline. And I'm curious if there are either two things at play, like what is the strategy? Or what are you currently thinking about as you're seeing the continued decline? And the, and what, at this point, I think we can sort of name as a trend. And then how does that impact some of the future conversations we're going to be having as a school committee around school closures or mergers or consolidations as we work to do sort of two things, right? Like right-size our buildings and then also deploy resources to the places that need them the most by possibly moving away from some of the, what we've been doing, particularly with the, the sort of safety nets we've been offering schools who have been unable to meet their projections.
Right, so I, I think, I think one is separating out in terms of the enrollment decline. What is, it's hard to do this, but what is connected with kind of an overall trend of enrollment decline of school age children? You know, within the city, which I think a lot of cities are seeing in move out of city versus factors we can control around the quality of education that we provide and the confidence that our public has in our school district. And so I think we'll be working hard to separate those out and to identify as we have been the issues that are most important to our parents and our community and then working very intentionally on those. Additionally, I think it's, you know, in specific areas, like say with the high schools and secondary schools, you know, making sure that each of them has particular things of interest, whether that's art, music, pathways, et cetera. Same thing with our, you know, K to sixes, you know, making sure that they, they have the kinds of things that parents are, are looking for and wanting in a school. This goes directly into Green New Deal as, you know, as we're sort of looking at the buildings. I think one of the things we're very much looking forward to is the facilities audit that we'll be getting in the early spring. That's going to tell us tremendous amount about our buildings, which are our buildings can actually be retrofitted, not retrofitted. So those will all be part of the conversation with school committee as we sort of work to identify, here's the things school buildings need to be able to have. Here's the buildings that can support them and are worth investing in, in, within. Here's the enrollment patterns in those areas. And then how do we put those puzzle pieces together so that we're building a stronger group of schools within BPS and in buildings that we believe represents the education that our community parents and students deserve and want. So that will be the process that we'll, we'll be working on with you as a school committee as, at each step of the way.
Perfect, and then my, my final question in the last minute and a half is, you know, I had been asking in previous weeks just around our, the, the information that families would be getting if they do not have a certified teacher in their classroom. And so I don't know if we have any updates on current vacancies, but also on the notification to families. And then I had obviously raised a question in a previous meeting around the possibility of parental choice in our choice system. If a, if a family has a young person in the classroom without a certified teacher, what options do they have?
Yeah, so that, that's, that's information that we'll have to get directly from O H C. I apologize, I don't have that tonight, but I will make sure that we get that to you, Member Cardet Hernandez, within the next couple of days.
And just to close out here, thank you for that. And then no updates on any sort of policy changes around options for families? If they, given the increase in vacancies, if they are still without a teacher?
Right now, no. That, that piece has not, no, there's nothing new to report on that. But I will get you the information on the vacancy pieces.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Are there any other comments, questions? If not, I too want to just join everyone in thanking and congratulating our teachers of the year. I, I agree with you, Mr. O'Neil, this is one of those wonderful moments that I wish we could be in place. But I'm just glad that we were able to have this happen and that they, they only represent the tip of the iceberg. I know that there were the many, many applications that there were so many people working hard in our district and want to thank them as well. If there's no further questions, I want to go, it's, excuse me, I'm now entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion or objection to the motion? Hearing that, Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Senator Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardet Hernandez? Ms. Lopera?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The superintendent's report is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Before we move on to general public comment, the committee will receive a report on tentative collective bargaining agreements with Boston School Police Patrolman Association and local union 1952, Painters and Allied Trades District Council, number 35, the custodians. The committee is deviating from our usual practice this evening by receiving the report and voting in the same meeting. The unions have ratified the agreements so that in the event of an affirmative vote, the Office of Human Capital may be able to process some of the appropriate compensation owed to the parties per the agreements as soon as possible, hopefully before the holidays. I'll now turn it over to Labor Relations Director Jeremiah Hassan for the report.
Madam Chair, thank you for having us tonight and Superintendent Committee members, thank you for, for having us and thank you for being willing to deviate from the usual process to take care of these and, you know, hopefully vote in favor of agreements that we think are strong deals that really benefit our members and our employees. Before I hand it over to Deputy Director Luis Capicchio and Labor Counsel Jeff Smith, who really led the negotiations on behalf of the district with these bargaining groups. I just want to take a second and thank, well, I guess first say congratulations to all the educators of the year. It's very exciting to be here on the night that they are on it, so congratulations. And second, I just want to thank the unions that were presenting awards or that were presenting tentative agreements on tonight for their work and their collaboration and cooperation in reaching, again, deals that I think are good for the district and good for our employees. And I guess, and also to thank, thank the city of Boston and the, the cooperation of Mayor Wu's team and the finance office working with us to get these deals done. So with that, I'll turn it over to Labor Relations Deputy Director Luis Capicchio to present the Patrolman's Association tentative agreement.
Good evening, everyone, Madam Chair, Madam Superintendent, members of the committee, thank you very much for having us this evening. So I am pleased to announce that we have reached an agreement with the Patrolman's Association. This is the union that represents our safety service officers of the Boston Public Schools. I'm going to go through what we have agreed to and then take any questions. So before I do that, I would also like to thank our union partners for a very collaborative process as well as Chief Cokely, Fran Johnson and Elise Amina, who also helped on our side in negotiating this contract as well as the budget team, the Office of the Superintendent and others that had helping hand in this process. So we have two MOAs. The first is for a single year contract from the 2020 to 2021 fiscal year. And that is for a 2% increase in their wages and that is the only provision contained in that MOA. The second contract is a three-year contract from the 2021 to 2024 fiscal years with 2 and 1/2%, 2 and 1/2% and 2 and 1/2% as the base wage increases of those years. We've also included a one-time, a $1,000 lump sum payment as recognition of the work that this group did during the pandemic, which is similar provisions that we've contained in other contracts this year, just to recognize that work. This group was showing up to work every day during the pandemic, so in recognition of that work. The other highlights of that contract are we revised the religious leave language, which includes personal days for members to take to, if the days that are, are in school for them to recognize holidays of their religion if they so choose. That makes our policy more equitable and inclusive for all of our members. We've also updated to include this group in the city's parental leave policy, which will increase the amount of paid parental leave available to those members. We've also included them in the city's military leave policy, which will increase the amount of days that reservists, the National Guardsmen can take for their service, paid days that they can take during the year for their service. So with that, I would like to open it up to any questions that any members of the superintendent may have.
Any questions? No. Okay.
There are no questions about the Patrolman's Association tentative agreement?
No, go on.
I will turn it over to Labor Counsel Jeff Smith, who headed the negotiations with our custodians union. Jeff?
Yeah, good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent, members of the committee and attendees. As Jeremiah said, Labor Counsel Jeff Smith, the Office of Labor Relations, Boston Public Schools. I'll be walking you through the two agreements we have for the local union number 1952, Painters and Allied Trades District Council 35, or as we colloquially call it, the custodians union. So we have two memorandums of agreement tentatively agreed to, one from FY '21 to '23. And the percent increases for that MOA are respectively 2%, 2 and 1/2% and 2 and 1/2%. You have a second MOA from FY '24 to '26. And those percentages are 2 and 1/2%, 2%, 2%. And again, like Lou briefed in his presentation on the Patrolman's Association, we'll also be providing the custodians union with a $1,000 COVID bonus. And again, a lot of these will sound familiar, we're also doing some holiday rework. We're adding Juneteenth as a holiday and changing Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day in their agreement. We're doing some sick leave reform. Before they earn their sick leave days incrementally, a day and a quarter every month, we're aligning them with other bargaining units in the district by giving them all their sick days on September 1st. So they're the same as their colleagues in BPS. We're doing some reform regarding working crew work. Certain members of the custodians union are part of what we call working crews, which are teams of custodians that do work outside the normal job to use a district would usually hire contractors to do, like painting, sanding, scraping the popcorn off ceiling tiles, floor polishing, things like that. That rate's been stagnant for quite some time, so we're increasing it in this agreement to keep pace with other increases. Finally, we're reforming some of the language in regard to our challenge buildings. Challenge buildings are buildings that the district has identified as particularly difficult to be a custodian in, and we want more management control over what custodians go into those buildings, only the, only the best. And we've got some language in the new MOA to enhance our ability to do that. That's all I have pending any questions from the school committee.
Again, thank you for your work on this, I'll now open it up for questions. Okay, hearing none, I just want to say thank you, Mr. Hassan, Mr. Capicchio and Mr. Smith for your work on these agreements. And we look forward to taking a vote on them later in the evening, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We will now move on to general public comments, Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, caregivers, students and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but are referred to the superintendent for later response. Questions on policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. We have 24 speakers this evening. Each person will have two minutes to speak and I will remind you when you have 30 seconds remaining. Those who require interpretation services will receive an additional two minutes. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or choose a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name, affiliation and what neighborhood you are from before you begin. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. When I call your name, please raise your hand virtually in Zoom. Also, please make sure you're signed into Zoom with the same name you used to sign up for public comments. That will allow us to identify you when it's your turn to testify. We'll begin this evening with City Council President. He'll be followed by Counselor Ricardo Arroyo, Leslie Gant, Michael Heishman and Mary Nee Loftus. If you could please raise your hands virtually. Counselor Flynn?
And thank you, Liz, and thank you to the chair and to the superintendent.
And thank you, Liz, and thank you to the chair and to the superintendent for giving me the opportunity and to the and to the members as well, giving me the opportunity to speak very briefly. Respect your time and want to say thank you. I understand there there might be a proposal to rename the McKinley School after Representative Mel King from the South End. I just wanted to take this opportunity to inform the inform the board that this would be a tremendous honor for the residents of the South End and for Representative Mel King. He's a critical monumental figure who has contributed greatly to the city of Boston, to the South End, helped unite unify the city of Boston. He's a one-time finalist, as you know, for for mayor of Boston and helped bring our city together. He devoted his life to improving the lives of so many young people and residents across the South End, across Roxbury, across Boston. I'm proud to call him a friend. I'm proud to call him a constituent. I know his family very well. And if there was an opportunity to name a a school after him, I would I would greatly and I'd be honored to support it because I know the amazing contributions Mel King has made to the city, not just in public education, but in civil rights as well. So just wanted to go on record in and say, I think it's an it's an exceptional idea. I know there's some residents talking about it now. So thank you for giving me the opportunity, Madam Chair, and to the superintendent and to the members, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I don't see Counselor Arroyo signed into the meeting, but it looks like his staff person, Jordan, is signed in. Jordan, if you're speaking on the counselor's behalf, would you please raise your hand? Okay, I'm not seeing a hand. So our next speaker will be Leslie Gant.
Okay, good evening, Chair Robinson. My name is Leslie Gant. I am the principal of the Joseph Tynan Elementary School. I feel like I live in two neighborhoods in South Boston and in Hyde Park. I'm here just to share my thoughts about the 24/7 Respect Program that is offered by the BPS Equity Department for middle school students. And at the time, we only have sixth graders, but this is a program that's been very beneficial to my students. It really focuses on helping our students to understand the true meaning of respect. And it's a one-day event that has lasting effects. The students engage in lessons, a video, and they also enjoy honest conversation about bias-based conduct and sexual misconduct. This is such an important program because it allows my students to find their voice in a safe space. I also appreciate this program from the Equity Department because our young people have to be able to speak up and speak out about injustice and misconduct. The entire Equity Department, led by Becky Schuster, are so responsive and resourceful, and they provide real-time support and reflective opportunities for staff and students alike. I really appreciate the long-term learning that is supported by this program, and I also want to share that it really helps my students to learn more about one another and what they have in common, instead of focusing on the differences that they have among themselves. This, to me, is one of the key roles that we have to make sure we engage in, and I appreciate the Equity Department for helping our students to find their voices as leaders. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Heishman.
Am I on?
Yes, good evening.
Mike Heishman, Dorchester Beja. Hooray for Mel King. What a wonderful person, what a wonderful leader, what a wonderful teacher. Ms. Robinson, on August 24th, 15, high-ranking retired BPS educators of color had sent a letter to the new superintendent protesting against the targeting, harassment, and firing of anti-racist Black and Brown Central Office leaders. The acting superintendent had placed five Central Office leaders of color on administrative leave. Ms. Skipper had to approve of those actions. When did you and your other colleagues first know about this August 24th letter? And what have you said and done about this? Thank you, Ms. Skipper, for your report today. Thank you, Mr. Tran, for your comments and questions. I also noticed the rest of you continue to be silent. What I heard today leaves me with no confidence that you are capable of handling this serious charge. What I heard is that everyone should get a hide get and hide behind a lawyer, circle the wagons and race them and defend racism when white supremacy, which is happening at the top of our system. Ms. Robinson, I'm sick and tired of Donald Trump lying and denying that he lost the election. Last November, Michelle Wu was elected mayor. On that same day, the citizens of our city overwhelmingly voted in favor of an elected school committee. If the appointed body had the confidence of our citizenry, the ballot question would have been defeated. Boston loudly proclaimed that we should no longer be the only municipality in our state that lacks a democratically elected school board. It is very sad that our mayor has become an election disrespecter. Madam Chair, the most important mission of the BPS is to protect the health and safety of our children. We are still in a public health emergency. I implore you to follow the excellent advice of Fam Coe, sir. I
Mr. Heishman?
Almost done. I strongly recommend that Ms. Skipper include COVID-19 report at every school committee meeting, just like the previous superintendent. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mary Nee Loftus, followed by Carolina Brito, Joanna Cruz, Sharon Hinton, and Sadie Jasmine. If you could please raise your hands virtually. Mary?
Good evening. My name is Mary Nee Loftus. I am a teacher at the McKinley South End Academy. I reside in South Boston, and I speak on behalf of McKinley's BTU members. Melvin H. King once stated, "Love is the question and the answer." That quote is at the heart of McKinley's renaming request. Names have meaning, carry energy, conjure images, characteristics, and values. Names are calling cards. As we considered a new name for our program, we focused on how the name could reflect, inspire, and instill in our central stakeholders, the students and families of McKinley Services. When one speaks Mel's name, a mural of positivity comes to mind. When we contemplate his life's work, his commitment to our youth, his empowerment of communities, and his dogged determination to assure the civil, economic, and social needs of every member of society be met, we find a paradigm we are proud to set forth for our children. Mel's life's work is premised on love. He believes in the transformative power of love. Love is his mantle. Love is his engine and fuel. What better way to honor our students than to provide their learning space with a moniker that represents the transformative power of love? The Melvin H. King South End Academy. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carolina Brito.
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm here to speak. My name is Carolina Brito. I'm the principal of the Rafael Hernandez Dual Language School. Very proud of it. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the Office of Equity. I know there's a report coming up tonight, and I just wanted to speak to the experience on the ground right now, what it's like to be a principal in BPS in the middle of the massive psychological recovery that is still happening in our schools. I think the strongest testament to the work of the Office of Equity with us has actually been the constant helpline on the other end of the phone and just being able to ask a question. Listen, this thing happened. I understand it to be bias-based behavior, but what is the right next move? What are my blind spots? What am I missing? That like sense of allyship within Central Office, I think, is incredibly important because it's the only line that I call in Central Office where we troubleshoot individual students. That's a really valuable thing. The team is very strong. We're responsive. They help us troubleshoot through what's developmentally appropriate behaviors, what's not, and how do we help support the families and the kids to actually learn from a mistake? I think schools are a microcosm of the society that we live in, and we're in this important position to have to interrupt bias-based behaviors before kids experience them in the real world. And so I'm really proud to be able to partner with their teams and excited at the work ahead as the Office of Equity is actually helping us pioneer what it looks like to do intersectional work on gender and sexuality in the Latino community, because you actually need different vocabulary for Spanish-speaking folks to do inclusive and gender-neutral language. So we're excited to be at the forefront of that work with them and just wanted to speak to what's good.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joanna Cruz.
Good evening, members of the school committee, BPS staff, parents, and students. My name is Joanna McKee Cruz, and I'm the proud principal of the Samuel Adams School in East Boston, and I live in Jamaica Plain. I'm here to let the Boston community know that as a single-building administrator, how important the Office of Equity has been in supporting my school community. I cannot thank them enough. The Office of Equity has been working around the clock over the past few years in dealing with COVID, dealing with COVID and ensuring the rights of our students and staff was the priority. I am so blessed, as Carolina said, to have the Office of Equity as thought partners to ensure that some of my most challenging situations are handled in ways that are equitable, well-thought-out, and focused on the best interest of our students. With the continuously changing landscape of education and social media, there are days when I've called the office to problem solve, ask questions, and ensure that the decision, the decisions of our school are made truly focused on equity. They always rise to the challenge. For my own personal growth and support and to support the creation of a truly equitable anti-racist school, I participated in the Office, the Office of Equity affinity groups. These groups help me reflect on my own experiences and my own history as we work as a school community to break down the systematic structures of racism in education. I really want to thank the Office of Equity for being national leaders in this essential work and want to recognize them as the forefront in the pioneers of doing this great work for our community. Thank you, team.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sharon Hinton, who will be followed by Sadie Jasmine, Cortina Brown, Jeff Rosica, and Jovita Fontanaz. If you could please raise your hands in Zoom. Sharon?
Good evening. I'm Sharon Hinton, mother of a PPS graduate, former BPS student educator, Hyde Park homeowner, community advocate, doctoral candidate, and founder and executive director of Black Teachers Matter. I had a talk with myself about whether or not I would submit another testimony tonight, whether or not I would share my thoughts and heart at the school committee again, because I've been doing it for a while, years, in fact. Some of the players have changed, and frankly, I'm still waiting for answers about timelines of decision-making that pushed out Black educators and Central Office leaders of color, a healthy, insane mask policy that will keep our students and teachers safe, an accurate accounting of $430 million of ESRA funds, an accurate organizational chart of BPS leadership with a racial, ethnic, demographic, and linguistic breakdown, a more detailed plan regarding security measures from BPS, you know, little stuff. And I wonder who is really listening and why we can't get timely, accurate, consistent, cogent, honest answers. Meeting after meeting, parents, students, community activists ask questions, demanded action and answers, and the elected officials seeking photo ops and votes say what they say in the moment, do little or less after the people speak, and between elections and appointments, do nothing, say nothing, or even worse, say what people who appointed them or pay them say. I've seen a few independent thinkers on the school committee speak up, and then they are pressured into silence or compliance or not reappointed. We've seen an elected school committee and had 30-plus years of an appointed school committee, and after experiencing both, what I do know is we have to do better because our teachers, our parents, our students are leaving.
20 seconds.
BPS. They're leaving Boston, and we don't get a do-over with our kids, with their futures, with our lives. And so I'm of the opinion that the reason we need to return, I'm almost done, the Boston School Committee to an elected body and not keep a committee appointed by the mayor is because one person, no matter how brilliant, educated, experienced, or talented, is never as brilliant, innovative, creative, wise, or better than all of us. All of us together is always more than just one of us. And let's be honest, for once, the Boston School Committee is beholden to the mayor, no matter who he or she is. 99,000 residents last November said they wanted the school committee to be elected, elected but not selected by the people, for the people. We fought to be Americans and not bow down to a king or queen. Discuss or answer these questions among
Ms. Hinton, I'm afraid you're past your time. We have several other people waiting to testify. Thank you. Our next speaker is Sadie Jasmine.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sadie Jasmine. Thank you for having me. I am speaking on the behalf of the BPS bus monitors. Well, I have been a bus monitor for over 23 years, and now that we in session of our new contract, and I don't think that we are being fairly accommodated as bus monitors. We don't have any benefits or anything as bus monitors, and we work as hard as everyone else. And I feel like we should go over the contract that we negotiated with the city. And that is all that I have to say because I have another member, Contina, that's gonna speak. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see Cortina signed into the meeting. So our next speaker will be Jeff Rosica.
Hope you can hear me okay. Good evening. I'm Jeff Rosica, and I'm the CEO of AVI Technology and the Board Chair of the Boston Arts Academy Foundation. I want to thank the school committee for the opportunity to offer my remarks and express my appreciation for your consideration of the name spaces being proposed this evening for the new Boston Arts Academy school building. For those who may not be fully aware, the foundation's role is to support the Boston Arts Academy by securing additional funding and support for many philanthropic foundations, corporations, and individual donors, which is vital to the school's ability to offer comprehensive, arts-intensive academic education for the students of BA. Funds raised by the foundation help provide the needed additional resources, tailored programs, and unique opportunities that the students so deserve. I also want to highlight the foundation's comprehensive building on our future campaign and the impact it will have for the future of the school, especially with the very high aspirations we all have for the school as it grows in its new world-class educational environment. That campaign is a six-year, $32 million comprehensive fundraising effort that was approved back in 2018 and was launched to better augment the Boston Arts Academy budget and to ensure long-term financial sustainability. Many of the naming opportunities and Many of the naming opportunities in the new school building have been envisioned as an integral part of the campaign and a key tool to help us raise the needed funds. I also want to note that stakeholders involved have all been really intentional about proposing a diverse naming slate. One reflects a civic, cultural and artistic contribution to society and the school and keeping in the tradition of inclusion in the arts. The names being presented also represent individuals and organizations who have helped make Boston a vibrant, diverse and more inclusive city. It's rich in culture. I also just want to add to finally that many of the names on the proposed slate represent several years of tireless effort by the foundation and the many talented, caring, committed and connected people who have worked so hard and even given them their own treasure to help BAA and the students. I just want to thank you for your time and thank you for your support.
Thank you. Um, Jovita is not signed into the meeting, so our next speakers will be Adonis Evans, Ruby Reyes, Edith Bazil, Eliana Silva and Jessica Gonzalez. If you could please raise your hands virtually. Adonis?
Hi, is this, is it on?
Yes, we can see you.
Hey, yeah, no, I wanted to say, um, I'm here to address like I would support the, um, change for the Mel King Fabla, sorry, I mean for the Mel King, uh, name change for McKinley. I wanted to say that, um, Mel has impacted my life personally a lot, like if it wasn't for him and his family and for the, um, Fablab in South End, I wouldn't have been able to get to where I'm at today. So I'm just, I'm very glad that, like, what is it called? We have these people, especially within our own community or from South End. That's like crazy, like he's a local legend and a hero, honestly, in my eyes. So it's like if we can honor him, like by renaming the school, that would like, it's like a huge thing for me. That's what I would consider like, what is it called? That's what I consider like one of the big things because we have like a mural at McKinley and we got one at Madison too. So like the fact that he was able to be shown and like we can see him every day on there, like that would be awesome. And especially coming from McKinley where, you know, we're in like a specialty school where, you know, we don't really like, kids don't really, you know, like, we don't really have that much like look up to the fact that we can have somebody that we can look up to and try to aspire to be that, that would be something really good to have. So, yeah. How much time was, is left on here?
Forty-eight seconds.
Yeah, no, but, um, no, and honestly, yeah, and I have to think like, and even like, even with like, um, the whole King family, like they have given like so much, they taught me everything and I honestly wouldn't have been where I'm at now because I'm, I'm over at Madison now, like as a parent. So it's like if we, if they have been given like so much inspiration, so much commitment and being able to help the youth to, to grow in such a way that like we have now, like they turn young students who like don't know, not, um, anything to young scholars and it's, it's honestly amazing. So that's, that's what I'm looking for.
That's great. Thank you very much. Next we'll hear from Ruby Reyes.
Uh, my name is Ruby Reyes and I'm the Executive Director of the Boston Education Justice Alliance and Dorchester resident. Saturday was the community meeting to talk about the Green New Deal and the making of a master facilities plan. We are excited to see that there are efforts towards this important plan. At the Saturday Engagement Workshop, approximately two-thirds of the attendees were city and BPS staff. As in the past, we've seen a big rollout meeting and then seen consultants and reports eat up all the funding so that there are few to no results for school communities and students. The most recent example of this was the presentation of the Special Education Report by the Council of Grade City Schools, which almost looked like a photocopy of the 2009 report down to Sue Gam being a consultant and author on both reports. Since the 2009 report, there have been, there, we have seen countless PRS complaints with DSE that found BPS Office of Special Education Services not compliant. Students being denied a free and appropriate education is contingent on BPS doing things differently.
Can you slow down a bit? Slow down a bit. Thank you.
Not naming disparities and seeking recommendations that will not be implemented. BPS has various exclusive, exclusionary practices that segregate Black and Brown students and deny them access to what should be equitable education. The Green New Deal feels like more consultants and writing expensive reports with no follow-through from the BPS leadership. Clearly, holding yourselves accountable is not working. Most recently, there has been an installation of new cameras into some school buildings, but families are still waiting for the installation of at least one new HVAC system district-wide. Priorities for capital improvement should not be used for increasing punitive measures on students specifically. As COVID cases rise across the nation, clearly there are also rising in BPS. We continue to urge BPS leadership to institute a universal masking policy after the December holiday break. Superintendent Skipper has said repeatedly that attendance is a priority for the district. Perhaps the district should consider a universal masking policy when students are missing days of school because of illness. With families receiving letters of truancy, what is BPS leadership doing to address the issues they are creating that dramatically impacts attendance? Besides not instituting ma- masking policies after holidays, transportation issues continue. Will there be a report on the causes of absenteeism related to district issues, including illness from lack of masking policies and transportation issues? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Edith Bazil.
Good evening. I was surprised yesterday to learn that this committee is taking a bold step tonight in voting on renaming McKinley programs to Melvin H. King South End Academy. This is a good step. Mel King's name embodies a lot of things. BPS graduate, BPS teacher, community leader, mentor, advocate, social justice warrior, youth director, activist, builder, creator, scholar. He mentored McKinley students. This is the meaning of service. Mel King was the first Black mayoral candidate running against Ray Flynn. He didn't win, but in our eyes, he was our mayor. He made city government work for us through sit-ins in the rain, setting up tent city, fighting gentrification in the South End, increasing affordable housing, employment and making community services work for, for the community. He also served as state representative in the Ninth Suffolk District for nine years. He inspired my generation by setting the bar high for what it means to be a community role model. A school with Mel King's name must reflect the high standards of this Boston hometown hero by exemplifying his fierce, unwavering leadership and innovation that centers educational excellence, justice and liberation, most especially for Black youth who he saw as being left out. Adopting Mel King's name means embracing his legacy of service and pursuing racial equity by any means necessary, cultivating the genius leadership talent and innate ability of Black boys. It means turning trauma into healing, paying into purpose and marginalization into maximization and optimization. Mel H. King South End Academy Leadership School must be anchored in the collective vision that centers youth voice and agency that supports teachers doing the work that leads to high-quality education and high-quality post-high school options. Leadership that embraces, embraces a mission embedded in restorative justice, focus on the urgency of now. To honor Mel King, BPS must seize this moment and create learning by any means necessary. Please vote yes on renaming and adopting the legacy of the honorable Melvin H. King. And I just want to point out, there has to be equity and timing. Sharon Hinton was cut off. Others were allowed extra time. That is not fair. That is not equity. I say you must recalibrate how you give people time and not cut them off. It is disrespectful. Thank you.
Um, our next speakers are not signed into the meeting. Eliana, Jessica, Pi and Olivia. So we'll move on to Daniela Clark, followed by Valerie Becker Noriega, Hamida Abdal Kalik and Ayesha Miller. Please raise your hands virtually. Daniela?
Good evening and thank you. My name is Daniela Clark and I am the proud president of Boston Arts Academy Foundation. I'd like to thank Chairwoman Robinson and this entire, um, body for your tremendous service to the city of Boston and our students and families. I'd also like to thank Superintendent Skipper, Doctors Depina and Eccleston for working with us over the last year to get us to today. I want to thank my partner in this work, Dr. Anne Clark and the entire BAA community. Additionally, I'd like to thank Myron Parker Brass, BAA Board Chair, for her support with the BAA Board specifically held on June 28th of this year, affirming their support of the names associated with our campaign. On December 13th, 2017, I stood with Anne Clark as the MSBA and the city of Boston awarded BAA a new building. BAA was founded on a public-private partnership. Although BAA received a new building, we were told that the school's funding formula would not change. The BAA Foundation has been a key partner to BAA. Together, Anne and I launched a $32 million Building Our Future Campaign. No matter how beautiful a school building, it is still just a building. It is the people and the programs in that building that makes the building work. Tonight, I am proud that together with Anne Clark, the BAA Foundation Board and colleagues and thousands of donors over these past several years, to date, we have raised $20 million to support BAA teachers' salaries, programs, scholarship supplies, and in the words of Deb Goldberg, "all the little extras." For example, this year, BAA Foundation will provide $2 million of funding to BAA, not including in-kind donations. We are grateful to all of our donors for their support and we thank each of you for your consideration to rename Boston Arts Academy after the great Dr. Alma Lewis and the other names associated with the Building Our Future Campaign. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Valerie Becker Noguera. Good evening, Valerie.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much. Uh, my name is Valerie Becker Noguera and I'm a proud alumna of BAA and Chair of the Boston Arts Academy Alumni Board and Association. First, I would like to thank the committee for their time and sincere consideration of the naming proposals as related to the Boston Arts Academy Foundation's Building Our Future Campaign and BAA's new school building. Discussion around the namings reflect hope, pride and shared identity in the community. It takes a village to raise a child and that village includes not only faculty, staff, parents and caregivers and the school district, but also a broader community of people near and far who care about the well-being and future of the students and their access to opportunities. We've heard many times in the circles of BAA that talent is equally distributed, but opportunities are not. And when I read through these name spaces, I see the names of people, families, institutions and organizations that have made an impact and care about our youth. They want to help in ways they can, open doors and share resources to lift our young artists and scholars and further inspire future leaders, not just of our age, but of the generations to come. And this is why I support the campaign and name spaces. The decisions around the naming opportunities made will affect the future of BAA students and maybe even BPS as a whole. And while today can be seen as a choice, it also represents a responsibility to helping our students who are worthy of their dreams and bright futures in every way we can. And that responsibility will fall on us as a village. It includes the school, BPS and the community at large. And as our youth's village, let us move forward in all we do with the mindset that together we can take on the responsibility to lead our youth, to open pathways, provide opportunities and support them as they step in their futures, knowing that they have a whole community in their corner and access to even more resources that can be provided through the Building Our Future Campaign and the name spaces at Boston Arts Academy. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Our final speaker this evening is Hamida Abdal Kalik.
Hello. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Hamida Abdul-Halik. I live and practice law in Fort Worth, Texas, but I grew up in Roxbury. And at a very young age, my parents, it was in the 1950s, enrolled me in the Alma Lewis School of Ballet on Blue Hill Avenue in Dorchester. My parents have passed, but I often thank them for giving me the opportunity to study under Ms. Alma Lewis. Next to my parents, she was the most influential person in my life growing up. She was a disciplin- a disciplinarian and a loving one because she was deeply committed to her students and to her community. I remember us sitting on the floor of the dance studio with our Black leotards, pink tights and pink ballet slippers, learning what I didn't realize until I was an adult were life lessons that have stayed with me throughout my life. She loved the ballet and exposed us to the discipline of the ballet. She exposed us to beautiful classical music. She taught us about everything from hygiene to the importance of studying hard and getting an education, about the importance of our appearance and always putting our best foot forward. I could go on and on and I'm sure I speak for the thousands of children she taught. I know she taught generations of my family once she established the National Center of Afro-African-American Artists, exposing us to people like George Howard in dance, John Ross in music, Vernon Blackman in theater and other gifted artists.
Twenty seconds.
Thank you. Each year during Kwanzaa, we always include her in our, in honoring our beloved ancestors who gave us so much of themselves. With Black Nativity, her gifts to all of Boston continue to this day. I cannot imagine a more fitting name for the Boston Arts Academy than the name Dr. Alma Lewis. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Robinson, that concludes our speakers for public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, and thank you to those of you who spoke this evening and shared your perspective. Your testimony is very important to us. Our first action item this evening is grants for approval totaling $1,356,000. I'll now open it up to the committee for questions and comments. Are there any questions, comments? Dr. Altins?
Um, yes, um, thank you. Um, I actually had a question that was specifically related to, um, I believe it's the final grant in our package. Um, just actually like sort of curious about, how, I mean, I mean, so it's basically like how they plan to bring in some of the, 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 the various schools to create a, a league. Um, and you know, what kind of work did they do to really like, to, to really solicit how much interest across the city that like there was in this? So I'm just really curious about that. Um, I don't know if there's anyone here who can really speak to that aspect of the grant, but that is a question that I do have.
Three chair. Is, is that on the, is that the Special Olympics grant that you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, and it looks like, uh, it's, it's, um, under athletics, it's under Avery. Um, Avery, are you on? I, I see you, I think. Do you have any background on that, on, on the process that we're going to be using? Or, or, uh, Nate, Chief Cooter?
Or Nate, Chief Cooter? Do you know any background on the question that Dr. Alkins is asking on the Special Olympics grant?
I apologize, Superintendent. I do not have background information, but I can follow up with Avery and make sure we provide a response to Dr. Alkins.
Yeah. That's like, that's completely, that's completely fine. You know, and I'm actually curious, even going back to the first grant, which is looking to help like a number of schools particularly, you know, Boston Collaborative, Madison Park, some of the other schools in terms of their engagement processes. I would actually be curious if they were, if they're finding or engaging any particularly novel strategies for engaging like those who are either chronic absentees, anything like that, anything that might be worth highlighting that, you know, maybe we should be keeping an eye on.
Sure, through Chair. So I think on the Mass Grad Grant, these are standard grants that have come through the state. So each of the schools is proposing the area that they're working on. As part of the grant report, you know, they're going to produce kind of their learn lesson. That's something that we can give to school committee. You know, or we could actually have one of the schools, when we do our high school presentation, one of the schools specifically refer, you know, to what they're working on. You know, this is the state's attempt to collect best practice as well through these Mass Grad Grants. So I can speak with the state about the mechanism they're using, and my guess is it's some kind of a website, and we can share it out to you.
Thank you. Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Hi, my question somewhat aligned to Dr. Alkins, I think, and so maybe you'll have to get back to us. But I'm curious specifically with the Grant for Special Olympics. I want to know sort of the level of impact here. So I see that there's 30 schools impacted in programming for the first goal around sort of the intentional inclusion of students with intellectual disabilities as well as autism. And then, but I'm curious on the Unified Sports League as well as some of these these sort of unified clubs, like how many are we trying to build? Is this a sort of system-wide approach, or are we targeting schools? If so, sort of, how would a school sign up? And then I'm curious through a disability lens, you know, like what are the distinguishing factors for a young person to access this league versus one with their more typical peers? And is this a self-selected process or something that the school is deciding? And so just sort of thinking about equity of access. I think there's incredible power in in what happens with the Special Olympics. My young people are part of that programming. I think it builds a beautiful affinity space, but we have to choose to be part of that space. And so just I'm curious about choice. And then also like just the sort of sports equity access piece across the system. And so not sure if we can answer some of those questions today, but I'd love to learn more. And then the sort of second question, maybe we can ask, I'm just curious on these lab updates. In the second grant, I believe, how many schools are impacted? Do they know that they're impacted? And what are, what's, if we can get just a little bit more color around what the outcomes are of those improvements?
These are falling under facilities and CTE, but they have to do with the actual equipment for the Skills Capital Grant. Deputy?
Doctor Superintendent, I'm the grant writer at Madison and I applied for the grant.
Oh, perfect.
And I've been sitting here for three hours. I'm so glad somebody asked a question. So yeah, we're replacing major equipment in the carpentry lab to ensure that it meets the standards and can increase the credentials of the students and make them 21st century carpentry-ready and ISSN as well. So I'm really excited. We were able to secure a million-dollar grant to, you know, increase those two labs. We also got a grant for the medical and health assisting early on. So, yeah. And you should visit. One of the pieces of equipment that we're replacing was so old. I graduated in 1977 that we don't, they don't make parts for it anymore. So, and I'm having a blast learning the bidding process because several pieces of equipment are over $50,000.
I can't wait to come see it and also to see what our young people builds in this new space. This is exciting. So two spaces get outfitted and then some additional tech as well.
Yeah, well, two of the labs, so the ISSN lab. And actually, I think on the paperwork, it said it's a two-year grant. So we're buying most of, you know, it's divided over two years. So we have to spend on everything by June of 2024. So it's a great win for Madison in the district.
Amen.
Thrilled to be here and to have been a part of it.
Nice job, Francesca.
Lucky, and our kids, our students are lucky. It's going to be fun.
Yeah. And you know, they make in the carpentry, just as a plug, they do really great work. And I bought one of those as an Adirandex Chias. Is that what they're called? You know, those really nice, and they build them. So, you know, they'll be selling them in the spring. So come on by.
Noted. Thank you so much.
Chair, I noticed that Avery is able to come on.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Francesca.
I'm sorry, I stepped away from my screen. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Members had questions, Avery, about the Special Olympics and the league and how we would go about identifying the 30 schools. What's the process we're going to be using to identify schools and students?
Yeah, and so I think just taking a giant step back and working with Special Olympics of Massachusetts, this grant is really around focusing on creating unified champion schools, which is a big part of what they are behind and believe in and what they're putting money towards and trying to create. So there's a number of ways of achieving that. Some of that is through the athletic lens. Some of that is through, you know, Unified PE and the classrooms. Some of those pieces are through events during the school day where you're recognizing and participating and encouraging your student athletes, your Special Olympic student athletes in your building. So it's really coming on a number of fronts. It's living with athletics right now, but this is really a joint piece in the district with the Special Education Department, with the PE department, with my department. So we're all working to kind of champion that. So when we named the 30 schools, the goal really is to work with those schools in any of those four buckets to try to get some movement and make some gains. And a lot of the work is already being done. We're just not calling it and naming it. So I think we have an opportunity to get this rolling and get it done. But we called 30, and I think that in the group that we had, it really was around putting together something we felt was feasible and something that we felt was attainable. But that 30 could be through a unified team. We're looking, we're working to do unified basketball. And I think we work on putting those programs together in a manner that works best for our kids. So it may not be necessarily traveling out and having a schedule or more of a jamboree-type situation where we all meet, you know, either during a school day or on a weekend and have the team. So right now, the feelers are really out for schools that are interested. A number have already engaged and identified themselves already through the liaison that Special Olympics of Massachusetts has and that's been working with the schools, and then we'll be working to kind of help other schools get up and running.
Just a quick follow-up question, sorry. If a young person is at a school without access to one of these programs, is there a choice process for families to be able to engage with programming that's not offered at their current school? And will this grant expand that opportunity for families?
Currently, we don't have an answer for that. I think in thinking about how we deliver, that may present the opportunity for someone to make the choice to participate. I would, I don't want to give you an answer now that's not accurate. So I'd like to go back to my group and really kick that down and see if that's something that we think we could put out and do in a high-level way, you know, make sure that we did it properly.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more questions on grants? If there are no further questions, I want to entertain a motion to approve the grants as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The grants are approved unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now move on to our collective bargaining agreements. The committee will take five separate votes, one vote on each agreement. CBA vote is number one. We'll now begin with the collective bargaining agreement between the Boston School Committee and the AFSCME, AFLCIO, Council 93, and affiliate local 230 cafeteria workers July 1, 2020 through June 2023. So are we question, this is still correct that we are taking this vote tonight? We are. Okay, fine. All right. Just wanted to make sure. You'll recall that Labor Relations Director Jeremiah Hassan presented this agreement to the committee on November 16. I'll now open it up to the committee for any further final questions or comments. Are there any questions? Dr. Alkins?
Yeah, so it's much less of a question, but I think, you know, I think it, I think it's important, you know, just based in like the transparency that we've been speaking about, just to simply, I think, name sort of the concerns that that some of us expressed with regard to just the process and, you know, good governance and what is that, and what does that mean? And everybody wants to be committed to that process. And we want to make sure that anything that comes before this body is, has ample time to be dissected, discussed, and you know, we're good for going five to six-hour meetings on that anyway. But I think, I think it's intentional to just to be mindful, and I think that's a message to all of our negotiations and just how we handle them and making sure that it's open to be discussed in a public forum and that we're giving opportunity for feedback to be solicited. And so I think I just want to name that as part of it, as much as we are committed to, I committed to making sure that things are done in a timely manner because we do want to honor the good work that everybody in this district is doing. But I just wanted to name that.
Yes. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that this one was presented on November 16. So we've, it did have the two weeks prior. It's coming tonight. Just given our earlier conversation, yeah, it caught me off guard too. So yes, this one did.
I got you. I was just putting it out there. That's all.
Okay, alrighty, thank you. Okay. Is there, if there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to approve the AFCME cafeteria worker agreement as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next action items are collective bargaining agreements between the Boston School Committee and the Boston School Police Patrolman Association. You will recall that Labor Relations Director Jeremiah Hassan presented these agreements to the committee earlier this evening. I'll now open it up to the committee for any final questions or comments. Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Just plugging in Dr. Alkins' earlier comments here. I see what happened. But really just echoing what he said, and always appreciative of Dr. Alkins and your leadership. But, you know, we have a responsibility to make space to listen to folks who who come here to share. And so I know this is an exciting opportunity to get this through, but I think like Dr. Alkins, I hope, you know, in the future, we are making space to make sure that there is opportunity for community to come together in this forum to give us feedback around any blind spots we have as we're moving towards a yes with any of our labor negotiations.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? If this is not, okay, sorry.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to thank all of, you know, our labor, you know, our labor attorneys and staff for the hard work of working, you know, across the table with our labor units, in this case, these three, who do such valuable work for our district. And to just, you know, thank and say a job well done on all sides. I also just want to thank the committee understood and, you know, we will always try to bring things in a timely way. I think the reality of many of our labor agreements is that they are years out of date, which means that many of them and the people that work in those unions have not had agreements that bring them current, in some cases, years. And so I think, you know, we are doing our best to try to rapidly manage that situation and bring those contracts current out of respect for our labor force, particularly many of our units who, from a pay standpoint, are not at the top of the salary scale. And so, you know, these two here, we appreciate, in particular, your willingness to entertain them in one session and to vote in them so that we're able to be able to get them current as quickly as possible and to get some money to our members before the holidays and shortly after. So do appreciate the committee's flexibility and willingness on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Dr. Alkins?
Yeah, and just a really strong thank you to you, Superintendent, for actually, you know, making this, really making this happen and making sure that we're bringing our labor unions to be current so that we can be a little bit more strategic and forward-thinking. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further? If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Boston School Committee and the Boston School Police Patrolman Association effective September 1, 2020 to August 31, 2021, as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
It's approved unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Boston School Committee and the Boston School Police Patrolman Association effective September 1, 2020. and the Boston School Police Patrolman Association effective September tw- first, twenty twenty-one through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Thank you, it's unanimous.
Thank you. Our next action items are collective bargaining agreements between the Boston School Committee and Local Union nineteen fifty-two Painters in Allied Trade District Council Number Thirty-five, our custodians, presented earlier this evening. I'll now open it up to the committee for any final, um, comments. Okay, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Boston School Committee and Local Union nineteen fifty-two Painters in Allied Trades, um, District Council Number Thirty-five effective September one, twenty twenty to August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Boston School Committee and Local Union nineteen fifty-two Painters in Allied Trades District Council Number Thirty-five effective September first, twenty twenty-three to August thirty-first, twenty twenty-six as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Motion is approved unanimously.
Wonderful, and thank you to the lawyers and to Ms. Costello and everyone that worked hard to get this to happen. Thank you so much. Our next report this evening is school and space renaming proposals. As some of you may know, the school committee has a school building and school space naming policy that was last revised in the late nineties. We're going to hear tonight from four schools who have proposals using the process outlined in the current school committee naming policy. But I've asked district staff to revisit this policy and make a proposed update to the school committee later this year. We want to make sure the policy reflects the current priorities of the district and school committee has a robust vetting process and requires the use of the racial equity planning tool. I'll now turn it over to Deputy Superintendent Sam DePina, who will present on behalf of the four schools this evening. The school leaders from the respective schools are also here to answer questions following the presentation by Dr. DePina. I'll now turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thanks.
Good evening, uh, Madam Chair, members of the school committee and the BPS committee joining us this evening. As Madam Chair stated, we do have a policy around renaming our school buildings and spaces. We're here this evening to present four schools who have followed this process to either name or rename their school or.
And then you make sure you sit right in front of the camera.
They changed it, yeah, that's them controlling the.
Some background.
The slides that they created for you as such.
Oh, again, that they go to, um, Ms. Hall, I think, yeah.
Thank you. Um, so as I mentioned, we're here to, um, present for schools who have followed this process, uh, to either name or rename their school or spaces within their school buildings. For just, for efficiency, for efficiency sake, I apologize, I'm going to give the full presentation this evening. But I'm joined by the school leaders, Dr. Brown from Madison Park, Dr. Uh, Clark from Boston Arts Academy, Ms. Nielsen from the McKinley's, and Mr. Walter Henderson from the Matter Hunt can help answer any questions you may have. The process was established to ensure that school staff, parents, and the surrounding community have opportunities to suggest and review the names before they submit it to the school committee. Tonight, there are four proposals from the McKinley Programs, Madison Park Technical Vocational High School, Boston Arts Academy, and the Matter Hunt Elementary School slash Matter Hunt Community Center. Next slide, please. I'll begin the first proposal with McKinley Programs. First, BPS is proposing to change the name of the four McKinley Programs, which are McKinley Elementary School, McKinley South End Academy, McKinley Middle School, and McKinley Preparation High School to the Melvin H. King South End Academy. After several years of considering the idea, the McKinley community began the formal process to request the name change in December, two thousand twenty-one. At the end of a robust process illustrated in tonight's presentation, and based on data collected in several phases, the school site council voted to submit Melvin H. King South End Academy as a final nomination for the name of the four McKinley Programs. Honorable Melvin H. King is a local icon and leader, as you've heard this evening from the various testimony. He's a former state representative for the Ninth Suffolk District, first African American to be in the final election for mayor of Boston, lifelong South End resident and community activist, former BPS educator, longtime champion of the city's youth, and supporter of the McKinley Fab Lab and other school initiatives. Ms. Pamela King, who is the honorable Mel- uh, Melvin King's daughter and spokesperson for the King family, has submitted a written statement of support for your consideration. Next slide. In our second proposal, BPS is proposing to change the name of two rooms in the Madison Park Technical Vocational High School in honor of former staff members Charles McAfee and Jose Solis. Cardinal Hall will be renamed, oh, we, I'm sorry, we are proposing to rename the, um, Cardinal Hall to Charles McAfee Hall in room seven, two, seven, five, to be renamed the so, the Jose Solis Student Center. Charles McAfee, or Chuck as many of us know him, has served as head of schools for Madison Park from two thousand to, to two thousand twelve. He has, uh, he was, he served in, um, for the Boston Public Schools for over forty years. And he's a recipient of the Milken Educator Award in nineteen ninety-nine. Jose Solis started his career in Madison Park in nineteen eighty-three by providing counseling and support to students in a variety of programs. He also served as a student support coordinator from nineteen eighty-eight to two thousand twenty-two. In early two thousand twenty-two, Madison Park Technical Vocational High School staff voted in favor of honoring significant contributions of these two staff members, followed by unanimous vote of the school site council. Two public hearings were held in April and May of two thousand twenty-two at Madison Park regarding the proposed namings. Next slide. In our third proposal, we are proposing to name the Boston Arts Academy, um, and the Boston Arts Academy Building in twenty-six spaces in the newly opened Boston Arts Academy. We propose to, we propose the BAA Building be named the Dr. Elma Lewis Building. Dr. Lewis was a visionary for arts education in Boston, particularly for students of color. The twenty-six specific names for the spaces in the building can be found in the presentation, and we will briefly show them now to the public. As a reminder, this information is also available on the BPS website for members of the public to review in more detail if they so choose. BAA's proposed, proposed names reflect a thorough committee process intended to honor both individuals who have made a significant personal or professional commitment to BAA or an intentional, or an, sorry, or an intention to honor individuals philanthropic contributions through the Boston Arts Academy Foundations Building Our Future Campaign. A representative group, including BAA students, families, caregivers, and various community members, including the Boston Arts Academy Foundation, participated in this process and completed the racial equity planning tool along the way. Public meeting for community members to give their input and ideas was first held in October, two thousand twenty-one, and a second public meeting was held in April, two thousand twenty-two. The BAA Board of Trustees held a meeting to discuss the names and consider the feedback from public meetings in May, two thousand twenty-two, followed by a vote of the Boston Arts Academy Board of Trustees in June, two thousand twenty-two. The last proposal this evening is to name a room in the Matter Hunt Community Center in honor of longtime community activist Annie Kincaid. Matter Hunt School Leadership managed the public process for the Matter Hunt Community Center because BS, because BPS has jurisdiction over the entire facility. I want to thank, um, Dr., uh, sorry, Walter Henderson and, uh, uh, Fonzo Campbell, Boston Community Hub School Coordinator for taking this on and guiding the process. Let me remember about Ms. Kincaid. Ms. Kincaid was a beloved Matter Pan resident, resident and neighborhood activist for more than forty years. She was a leader of the Colorado Street Neighborhood Association, Shangri-La Community Gardens, and the Shangri-La Walkers. She also led efforts to ensure Elmont Park was safe and clean for its residents. In addition, she was honored as Boston's two thousand fourteen Crown Crime Fighter of the Year on National Night Out. I'm now going to turn it over to Ms. Edna Hall to close the presentation now. Ms. Hall is a longtime friend of Annie Kincaid and is going to share a few words about why the community supports this change. Ms. Hall? Ms. Hall still with us this evening?
Yes, I am. The Colorado Street Citizen Group would like to rename the community room at the Matter Hunt Elementary School in honor of Ms. Kincaid, who was a member of Charles Street AME Church and been a member of the community for over forty years. Miss Kincaid was a self-sacrificing woman who was authentic in all of her dealings to make her community in hand a better place to live. She was a pioneer of the community as well as a strong of the street Elmont Park. She along with her, uh, her case in the, in the community, worked hard to help make a, a safe in a life place to have sports, activities, entertainment, whatever, for adults and children. She also spearheaded the Colorado Street Citizen Group, Derek McGarrett and the Shangri-La Walkers. Not only was she involved with activities in her community, she stepped outside of Matter Pan and was in love with her mother throughout the great Boston era, such older years, of area, O Hall Chapter four, six, eight, five of ARP, Mass Senior. Kincaid was admired and respected and appreciated by many.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Um, you came in interrupted sometimes throughout your presentation, so I'm wondering if we can get a copy of your written statement so we can provide it to the school committee. But I just want to again, thank you for, um, speaking on behalf of Ms. Kincaid. Madam Chair, that concludes our presentation, and we're here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. DePina, and thank you to everyone who shepherded these renaming proposals through the process. I'll now open it up to the committee for questions and comments. Are there any questions, any comments? Mr. O'Neal?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. I just, uh, first of all, want to thank Mr. DePina for the presentation. I know, as he said, the school leaders were all with us, and um, I'm particularly thankful for these four school communities for the amount of work that they did to engage and come up with this within their communities. So to see the meetings that were held, um, the surveys of students, the votes, uh, the votes of staff, um, and most importantly, the votes of the school site councils is extremely important. That is the process that is required before it ultimately comes to us, but um, these were all, I find them really thoughtful recommendations, uh, particularly, um, about Representative King, who did, has done so much for the city of Austin and is a graduate of the Boston Public Schools and started his career teaching in the Boston Public Schools and is a lifelong South End resident and has testified to this committee a number of times over the years about the McKinley School in the South End and plans for it. And, uh, so particularly applaud, uh, that proposal as well as a number of the other thoughtful ones. So I just wanted to thank, uh, the four school communities for their involvement in this process and, uh, the thought that went behind each of these recommendations. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Maida?
Um, I, I'll just say, um, that recommendation, Boston Arts Academy, um, are agreed on throughout the school community. Uh, the students, um, last year, there was a whole big discussion about it, and the students were involved, I mean, uh, quite a few of them didn't go to the meeting. Uh, I don't know exactly what I'm saying, I'm just basically saying, uh, that all the names forward are, um, the community, uh, the students, um, and parents as well, just kind of, at least, yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Just want to echo Mr. O'Neal as well. Thank you for the presentation and the thoughtful process that so many people went through. Um, change is hard and changing names is, you know, I don't have to say in this moment, uh, in time is, uh, is part of one of many culture wars that we're experiencing. Uh, when I got this, I, I did sort of some Googling to try to sort of see some history around some of this, so I think it also, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, um, to Edith Bazile, who comes here almost every single session, um, who wrote a fantastic piece in two thousand twenty-one about, uh, renaming the McKinley School. And so to see that come to life, um, in, uh, Mel King's honor, uh, sounds really, uh, purposeful and powerful, and we've heard tonight, uh, the impact that that change would have. Um, so I'm just really excited, uh, that we get to be part of this moment, and I look forward to the further discussion at our next session if, if folks come here to share their thoughts and their feelings.
Thank you. Anyone else? I just want to echo everyone's, um, thanks to the four schools for their incredible work on this. Um, as a child of Boston, um, I grew up as a member of the Amalou School, taught there. My son went there, so it is wonderful to see her being honored in this way. Um, as who, at, at, at one time, I think we thought of her as the First Lady of the Arts for the. for the city of Boston. She really did advocate and I am happy that this generation of young people will grow, it will go up and know her story and understand what she did so many years for all of us. And um, the same for Mel King, um, again, another Boston icon and just so happy, um, for both of them and as well for the um, the naming of the community advocate in the um, at the Matter Hunt School um, as well and all of the the myriad of names that have come forward for the Boston Arts Academy. So look forward to both learning more about who all of these folks are and I'm celebrating the hard work of all four communities. So thank you all very much and the committee looks forward to taking action on these recommendations in our next meeting. And so our final report this evening is our annual Office of Equity update. I'll now invite Assistant Superintendent of Equity Becky Schuster to please present her report.
Uh, good evening, everyone. It's great to be here this evening. I I believe that Chief Grandson might want to introduce the report.
Thanks so much. Um, I just want to quickly, as uh, as the evening is getting late, say two quick things. Um, a few years ago, we had the opportunity to become more intentional about our equity work at BPS, uh, and we created the Equity Strategy and Opportunity Gaps Division. And so that's inclusive of the Office of Equity, Office of Opportunity Gaps, and uh, our Office of Retention, Cultivation and Diversity, uh, and our office, uh, that monitors the BPS Strategic Plan Implementation. Uh, so you'll hear from uh, the Office Equity tonight and the great work being done there. Um, but you'll also hear from the other departments, um, a part of the division, uh, throughout the year. Um, and before I turn it over to Becky, Becky Schuster, um, I'd just like to take this opportunity as a team leader, it's not often I get a chance to publicly acknowledge uh, team members, uh, but want to thank uh, Becky and her leadership and the members of the Office of Equity, uh, who you'll get introduced to shortly, uh, for the work that they do day in, day out. I think you heard um, some of the testimony from the school leaders and you'll get to hear some more soon. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Chief Grandson, for your support of our work, of our team and of me personally. Um, this is not easy work that we do in the Office of Equity and we count on you, on the superintendent and on the school committee, um, to to back us in all different ways. So thank you for that. It's great to be here to make our annual report. This report will cover school year two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two, and our last slide will preview the work that we're doing during this school year. Um, it's great to be here to speak with the school committee members that I've presented to before. I just celebrated seven years with the Boston Public Schools and to have this first opportunity to interact with a few new members. I want to share that I live in Hyde Park and I get emotional when I talk about the fact that shortly my daughter will be graduating from the Boston Public Schools after starting in K one. So she's gone all the way through and our family has a stake in this district. I want to acknowledge the school leaders who were so generous in sharing their comments earlier this evening. And we will also have the opportunity to hear from two additional school leaders toward the end of my presentation, who will share with you about um, our partnership with their schools. And I truly view not only our educators of the year as uh, examples of heroism, but also every school leader. This, these are tough times, um, to be leading schools and I'm grateful for the opportunity um, to partner with them and back them. Okay, we're going to go to the next slide. And I want, do want to introduce my team to you. They are all here, um, via Zoom. If we were in person, you would see them literally beside and behind me. Um, but I will introduce you a bit to them. Um, the five folks on the top row as well of the slide, as well as Chris Mary, our Equity Manager on the bottom left corner, those are the permanent members of our team. The four additional folks on the second row are our Northeastern undergraduate co-op students and other interns who are working with us this year. And I included the full team because trust me when I say every single one is essential to us getting our our job done. Most of our team is bilingual and bicultural. We have language capacity in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Somali, Arabic and Korean. And we have our own miniature pipeline program in the Office of Equity. Two members of our permanent team are former Northeastern co-ops and we have other former co-ops from our team who are leaders elsewhere in the district. We also have three employees on our payroll who assist employees with disabilities in our schools. They don't work with us on a daily basis, um, but they play an essential role in supporting the work of key folks in our schools, including uh, two managerial sign language interpreters who report every day to the Harstman School. Last year, our work was cited as a model in two different um, important settings. One, the Office of the Attorney General, um, Maury Healy, now our governor-elect, um, issued guidance to schools on hate and bias incidents and specifically cited some of the work of the Boston Public Schools Office of Equity and also the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security cited our work in multiple um, sections of their new School Hate Crime Resource Guide. So we're proud of the work we do each day and it means a lot to be recognized by others for the quality of what we do. Go to the next slide. I hold on to your hat as I read out the numbers of what this team, this small but mighty team accomplished during the previous school year. We responded to two thousand seven hundred and ninety-four formal requests for assistance. That's not every call that we had. We have many that informal consults that we provide. This is the ones that were formal. So this includes investigations. This includes um, partnering with schools to support them through every stage of investigations of student incidents. This includes responding to hundreds of accommodation requests, uh, formal consultations that we document because they may lead to more serious issues later and a total of a hundred and eighty-five requests for support from our LGBTQ plus student support manager. This is the second year that we have a person in that position in the district and the difference that is being made by Carmen Fonseca every day to our LGBTQ plus students is truly touching and um, and trend setting. I want to talk a little bit about the trends that we see in these numbers. These are substantially higher than previous years. The three years before that, we had a total of between twelve hundred and thirteen hundred total requests for assistance. A few of the drivers, I think, included the pain that our students are in after experiencing so much isolation, um, and other loss, personal loss um, and other impacts of the height of the pandemic. And when folks are hurting, they wave a flag, um, seeking assistance in the form sometimes of off-track conduct. So our students are hurting and they are acting out in different ways that fall under the purview of the Office of Equity. I think that's one piece. A second piece is there's been a huge increase in our accommodations work, partly directly related to the pandemic, including last year, uh, hundreds of requests for accommodations related to the vaccine requirement. But also because of the pandemic, more folks became aware of how helpful and responsive our disability, pregnancy and religious accommodation work is. And so we're seeing an uptick, I think, because there's more awareness of the availability of those supports. Third, I think we're seeing an increase in reporting. I think some of the increase in these numbers is not because of an increase in off-track conduct, but rather an increase in uh, bringing those concerns to us. It's always hard to measure exactly which is which, but we have indications, for example, right after we do our uh, program twenty-four-seven respect that Principal Gant spoke about so beautifully. Um, right after we do that program, we see an uptick in reporting. We, we believe that's because of awareness, not because um, folks are acting out more after that. Um, and lastly, as I already mentioned, uh, the increase in the provision of LGBTQ student support, um, a combination of more of our students feeling safe to be visible about who they are and to ask for assistance as well as um, the second year of having a full-time person in that role. Um, folks are coming to ask for assistance because it's available. We'll go to the next slide and talk about um, our case process, how it works. I am using the example here of a student on student bias-based incident and what the steps would be of how we respond. It's quite similar to other sorts of cases. Um, but this is the most common um, type of incident that comes to us and a good example of the process. So first, we usually get a call from a school administrator and we consult with that individual about next steps. Um, and we then follow up immediately with an email that documents exactly the next steps that we have suggested to that particular school administrator. And by the way, our school administrators have, um, who are calling us have already been trained by us in this process. The school administrator then determines whether um, families need to be informed. Um, certainly, we're going to inform the family of the individual whose conduct may have gone off track as well as those who were present or targeted by that off-track conduct. And sometimes we need to communicate more broadly to the classroom or to the school community, depending on the nature of what happened. That school administrator investigates what occurred and immediately creates a safety plan if that's needed. Uh, we want to make sure that if there's any question of safety, that is addressed immediately. Once the school administrator is able to determine if one of our equity circulars, those are our internal policies regarding bias-based conduct and sexual misconduct. Once the school administrator determines if a circular was violated, then they work with us to identify next steps, either applying uh, the Code of Conduct if needed, uh, addressing impacts. For example, if we have uh, an offensive word used in a kindergarten class, we might next be reading some picture books about what kind of words are uh, words that make our classmates feel good about themselves and what kinds of words can be painful. Then that is depending on obviously the age group and the nature of what happened. Work together on next steps. The school administrator documents the process and um, submits to us a summary form. Uh, we try to make it as uh, simple as possible to not use up the time of our administrators on documentation, but it's very important that we're able to record in our uh, digital case management system every step that was taken. And lastly, we enter that information into our case tracking system so that we're able to uh, ensure that the needed steps were taken and we have a record of that process. Um, depending on how broad the impact was of the incident, uh, we determine if the Office of Equity should follow up in any other way, um, with that educator, with that school, with that administrator, with that family. Go to the next slide. It's important that we talk about the close partnership that we have with Succeed Boston and the Boston Public Schools Safe Space and Bullying Prevention Hotline. We work daily in partnership with the folks on Jody LG's team who are experts in bullying. If a particular um, incident that's reported may be bullying and it's also looks like it's bias-based or sexual in nature, then we partner on addressing that situation. If the heart of the matter is bullying and it doesn't appear to have a significant bias-based element, it will stay entirely with the bullying team. If the heart of it is related to bias or sexual nature, the primary leadership on that particular incident stays with the Office of Equity. So we are in daily contact with that team and together we mobilize people in all different roles in schools as well as in the central office to creatively and collaboratively ensure that we meet the needs of the impacted students, families and staff. Um, I'd also want to mention that we're very grateful that Succeed Boston, um, takes leadership on bullying prevention and uh, civil rights education programming so that when a young person has engaged in bias-based conduct or sexual misconduct, they have the opportunity not just to be addressed through a code of conduct, but uh, perhaps even more importantly, to find out what root causes were of uh, the off-track conduct and getting educated. Why is it that that word was so hurtful? Why is it important to learn about consent? What does consent mean? Um, so Jody's team does an amazing job of meeting with our students to educate them about their rights and responsibilities related to bullying and bias-based conduct and sexual misconduct. We also have a wide range of resources on our website that help people with follow-up activities with their classrooms. Go to the next slide. Uh, we provide extensive training to employees, including training them on equity protocols, how these processes work on LGBTQ student support, um, on racial equity and hiring, and we also provide one-on-one sessions to employees who their behavior has um, been, they've been found to have violated an equity circular and we provide them with training, um, to ensure that does not happen again. I'll talk more about the racial equity and leadership training at the end of the presentation because that's mainly been this school year. Um, and Principal Mickey Cruz, um, mentioned earlier that another role that I personally play is to develop a cadre of leaders, um, of white anti-racist affinity groups in the central office for our school leaders, in some cases for our uh, school staff and families. And we even had one group last year for white students at a school. So that's a project that I engage in as well. Go to the next slide. Um, you heard from Principal Gant about twenty-four-seven respect and there's a link here and I I hope those of you on the school committee who have not watched the video will later take the time to see our Boston Arts Academy student actors perform in this thirteen-minute video that features four scenarios um, of bias-based conduct and sexual misconduct. We are so proud that this is our fourth year, um, making sure that our middle and high school students participate in twenty-four-seven respect and that we've won two national awards, including a telly award, which is um, quite prestigious for a short educational video, um, for for this program. Um, I'm now going to pause for a moment and we're just going to show you a literally one-minute clip um, from the video, just to give you a flavor of what our students are seeing and discussing. So we'll go ahead and see that clip for a moment. Let's take a look at our next scenario. You're so gay. No way, girl. Pause the video and take a moment to discuss these questions.
How do you think John felt when he received the photo? What about when Marcella sent the emoji? Do you think this could make John feel excluded at school or make it harder for John to focus on his schoolwork? How might it impact John if Marcella shares this photo with others? What do you think John should do next?
Marcella expressing disgust about John's sexual orientation is bias-based behavior that could be devastating for John and could get Marcella in trouble. John could save a screenshot or write down a description of what John could save a screenshot or write down a description of what happened. If John knows anyone else who saw what took place, he could ask them to write it down too.
Well, we'll stop there. So that just gives you a taste of one of the four scenarios that are presented that are aimed to teach students about the impact of their conduct and how to get help in addressing an incident that might occur and might impact them in the classroom. The video is available entirely in spoken Spanish with all the actors speaking Spanish, as well as the version you just saw in English that has closed captions in over a dozen languages. And I also link to the slide in case folks would like to see it. Those who haven't yet, a two-minute video that has interviews with schools about the impact this program has had on them. We'll go to the next slide. I want to give a few statistics now about our work this year. This is a summary of our incident reports. As you can see, the overwhelming majority of incidents reported to us are student-to-student, either biased, bias-based conduct or sexual misconduct. The next slide. Regarding our employees, this is the past five years of data. You can see that over time, we have a downward trend in the number of investigations we're needing to do each year. We consider that good news, that we feel employees are getting the message about what is acceptable and not acceptable conduct in our schools and our workplaces. And in terms of cases where there is a finding of a violation, you can see that those numbers have remained low in recent years. And we have no reason to believe that reporting has reduced, if anything, the opposite. Next slide. In terms of protected categories, the allegations toward employees, for every single year, race has been number one. Race remains the key issue that impacts our employees and our students every day. Obviously, there are many other important categories that we deal with, but race continues to be number one. And you can see this year that in terms of concerns regarding employees, that sex is number two, national origin number three, and a few cases related to disability and sexual orientation. We'll go to the next slide. In terms of bias-based misconduct by students, similarly, cases related to race have been number one every year. We've had a significant increase in reporting of concerns regarding bias-based conduct regarding sexual orientation and gender identity. Again, we feel this is primarily a rise in students being more visible about who they are and also feeling more supported to come forward when they're not treated in the affirming way that is expected among our students and our staff. Go to the next slide. Sexual misconduct, it's very important that we talk about what this means because when we see these numbers, they are very concerning. However, I want to make very clear that sexual misconduct and the overwhelming majority of these incidents are quite minor. It might be a one student making an unwanted flirtatious comment to another student, for example. It might be a game of tag on the playground that accidentally resulted in someone's rear end becoming visible. So most of the incidents that are reported to us are quite minor. You can see that last year, we had a big uptick in the reporting of these incidents that parallels the uptick that I've been talking about throughout this conversation. And go to the next slide. I'm fortunate to partner with the other offices in our division that Chief Branson referred to in providing internal consultancy to, in particular, our operational departments in the central office. Every department in the central office has a liaison from our division. And the Office of Equity has a particular role to play with operational departments, such as transportation, food and nutrition. We don't get as involved in instructional work. We leave that to the experts in the Office of Opportunity Gaps. We're also quite involved in equity impact analysis, including the equity impact statements that school committee receives at each meeting. We're responsible for final review of each of those statements. And you'll hear in a few minutes about the partnership we've had with the leadership of the Horace Mann School since we recently celebrated the first deaf school leader at the Horace Mann School for the Deaf in its 153-year history. This is quite an extraordinary milestone and we've been really fortunate to get to be part of supporting that work. So that's the perfect segue to the next slide, where we'll be introducing two school leaders to share with you their experiences partnering with our office. And I would like to first introduce Head of School Michelle Eisen Smith, who you also saw earlier, talking about one of the educators of the year. And she's going to share a little bit about our partnership with the Horace Mann.
And this is, this is Jody, the ASL interpreter. Could you please spotlight me as well? My name is Dr. Michelle Eisen Smith. And as I mentioned earlier, tonight, I'm the head of school at the Horace Mann School for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing. And I'm here tonight to speak about the importance of the important work that the Office of Equity does. The Office of Equity was integral in supporting the selection process that involved the hiring of the next head of school, which is myself. They involved the Deaf Community Partnership and the school community BPS leaders. They were all key in the process of my being selected as the principal. Once I was selected, the office played a key role in ensuring that I had all the tools that I need to thrive as the first deaf leader. First deaf leader in Boston Public Schools, but also nationwide. A lot of people weren't sure how to support my access, but everyone was open and willing to do so. They were, the Office of Equity was instrumental in giving me the tools that I needed. And as Becky mentioned, as the first deaf leader in the history of Boston Public Schools, Horace Mann was established 153 years ago, the first public day school for the deaf in America. This is quite an achievement. As I said, Horace Mann has had historical moments throughout its 153 years. And now is an opportunity about providing access, not only for myself as the deaf head of school, but we've, this, these achievements have happened so much due to the part of the Office of Equity. And our communication access person who is hired to work with BPS is not just working with me, but with our families, with our students, with our communities, to making sure that access and communication access is met throughout our community. Providing interpretation for all meeting access is instrumental for us to all be able to work together and share our skills. The office has worked with developing, we have a new work group that's established to look at the needs for placement and within BPS. This is a research-based working group to make sure that we meet the needs for all deaf and hard-of-hearing students throughout Boston Public Schools, not just at the Horace Mann. So when you think about what this looks like, how our students can succeed in an equitable environment is quite important. Because of this collaboration with the Office of Equity in Boston Public Schools, our deaf and hard-of-hearing students see someone who are just like them. In not having a role model, people didn't have, young people didn't have dreams of what they could become. Now they're seeing the head of a school, our educators, our assistant head of schools. We match one of their many identities, one of the many intersectionalities, and we see that they have a chance to dream big. They will be able to thrive. If I've done it, they can do. That representation is so important and valuable to see someone who looks just like you achieving and accomplishing. Recently, a student came and spoke with me and said, you know, I want to be a principal just like you. And I said, you can have my job when you're ready, come on in. But the fact that they were able to have that connection with someone who is deaf, with a successful adult, they thought that no one deaf could be an administrator or a leader. So here we are, working together with the Office of Equity and BPS to say, yes, our deaf students can do anything they dream of. Last, but really not least at all, since I've been principal, that they have supported me with the help of our hotlines, instant support for different things that happen throughout our school day, for our staff, for our students, to earn the access that they deserve. So I feel very deeply honored and grateful to be able to speak tonight about the incredible, amazing hard work that the Office of Equity has done. I know it's a late night, but thank you very much for hearing me out. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Michelle. And now I'd like to invite Michelle Davis to speak.
Good evening, everyone. Michelle Davis, the very proud principal of the Warren Prescott K-28 School. And I was asked to share a bit about my work with the Office of Equity. In every instance, I have found them to be extremely helpful, insightful, and authoritative. As a principal, I have contacted the Office of Equity on numerous occasions. Some were mandatory calls, while others were to proactively talk through a situation. My operational leader and Region One Superintendent have always advised me to call the Office of Equity. The Office of Equity has supported my work in many ways, such as situational issues when I needed guidance, planning for facilitating conversations with staff, following equity reporting guidelines, questions about accommodations, especially during the height of COVID, professional development for my staff, clarifying rules and regulations about equity circulars. And in all of these instances, they gave me all the time and expertise necessary to make the best possible decision. Whether I called one time in a day or three times in a day, and regardless of which staff member picked up the phone, I received a consistent response. First, it was validation for calling. And I always got the message, you made the right decision to call. Second, patience and trying to get a deep understanding of what I was trying to process through. And third, clear guidelines of what my next step should be. They have also connected me with appropriate resources, whether it was an article to utilize with my staff or an agency that might help support a student or staff member. We also utilize the Respect 24/7 video with our upper school students. And I actually also showed that video at School Side Council to inform my parents of how we were supporting students and understanding safeguards. So as a principal, the Office of Equity has been an invaluable resource to me and such a support for my school. And I'm very happy to speak about the Office of Equity tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Principal Davis. And it really touched me to hear you talk about the quality of the team that I am fortunate enough to work with every day. I can't say enough about who they are as people, how devoted they are to the work, and of course, the long hours that they have been willing to put in in order to support school leaders and all of the people who learn and work in the Boston Public Schools. I go to my last slide now, which is about our goals for this school year. We are rolling out, in partnership with the Office of Opportunity Gaps, three modules of racial equity and leadership training. The first module is for all employees about implicit bias in the context of K-12 education. The section, second module is for most employees and goes over key concepts and history related to racism, including the history of the 1974 desegregation of the Boston Public Schools. And the third module, which is for a smaller number of employees, on how to use the racial equity planning tool and how to hold school-based equity roundtables. So that is in progress this school year. We're also planning rollout of more detailed training on sexual misconduct investigations for our school administrators and operational leaders in partnership with the Children's Advocacy Center that does, they're experts in that field. We are taking steps to improve how we communicate to our own staff, our students, and our families around how it works to contact the Office of Equity and what happens next when we receive a concern. We are working every day to get every single employee of the district to sign off that they have read and understood our internal policies, either in English or in their first language. We're working on an upgrade to our case-tracking software. We made a selections about seven years ago and we're ready to re-select something that we think will meet our needs a little bit better. We have rolled out 24/7 Respect for all sixth graders and all ninth graders this year. We are looking forward to an increase in Office of Equity capacity so that we can keep up with the pace of the increased calls for support from us. And we're also preparing for an expanded training mandate to start in the next school year, 2324. We hope to do some deeper training on equity protocols, a second round, perhaps we could say, for those who have perhaps took the training several years ago and it's time for an update. So we will need more training capacity for that. That is my report for school year 2122, and I welcome your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Schuster, for the report, and thank you to your entire team for their critical work. I'll now open it up to the committee for questions and comments. Ms. LaPera.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you so much, Ms. Schuster, for that incredible report. I think it speaks volumes that you have principals who'll come and speak on your behalf and on behalf of the relationship and the trust that you've been able to build with folks in a time of need in the service of students and families. So thank you. I have a, you answered some of my questions in terms of what, what word thing. So thank you for that. But I'm trying to get a better sense of clearly there is a case management component to your work. And I'm curious to understand how you synthesize the information that comes in from case to case to really see a more holistic picture and identifying trends across the system and then working with the system to perhaps think of preventative strategies. Clearly, you're thinking about that with the video with students and the 24/7 work. But I'm thinking in terms of school culture and perhaps educator practices, how your office works with the system and seeing trends and identifying them and then addressing them in a preventative way.
That's a great question. Thank you. Yes, so we have, every year, as we set our goals, we are always rooting those goals and what we've learned from trends of the previous year. So you can see a direct line from some of what we experienced during the year we're reporting out on to some of the goals that I discussed with you for this current school year. One of the reasons why I want to increase capacity in our office is with the staggering increase in the number of calls that we're receiving, it means that a lot of our time is taken. It means that a lot of our time is taken up with response. And that's essential work that we must continue doing. But I would love to do more work around tracking trends. For example, I'd like to have um, work towards with our new case management system. Having a dashboard where we can see other schools we're never hearing from. That's probably not because they've never had any bias-based conduct. Okay? So giving us those sorts of alerts. Are there schools we're hearing from a lot? Is it all from the same fourth grade class at the same school? What's happening in that class and how can we bring every possible resource to bear? Um, so we certainly do some of that work. Perhaps more intuitively and you know, we have a weekly team meeting and people say, have you been getting a lot of calls from that school? Yeah, I have been. What do you, what do you think's going on there? Have you heard anything? How can we team with the operational leader, with the school superintendent for that particular school? Um, with the social worker, with the family liaison to try to figure out uh, what is the root cause of that uptick and how can we work together to address it? So some of that is happening. I look forward to making more of that work happen.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Um. And I think the other piece, and you alluded to it a little bit, a little bit, um, but would love to hear additional thoughts. It seems that the first point of entry tends to be with the school leader in terms of engagement. And so I was curious to understand if, for example, a parent. Um, not necessarily because it was an issue, but in terms of trying to understand what resources or what pieces um, could be addressed, should be, should there be a prospective um, challenge. Sorry, I'm I'm speaking, I'm not speaking in specifics. But if it's a family, like it's a family who is interested in engaging with the Office of Equity for whatever reason. Is there an avenue for that, given that typically the entry point seems to be the principal?
Yeah, I would say that um, in a single administrator buildings, the entry point is consistently the principal. But in buildings that have more than one school administrator, we're actually more likely to hear from another administrator other than the school leader. Um, because of division of labor and and among this administrative team. Terms of families, um, we certainly do receive calls from families. It's one of the reasons why it's so important that we have bilingual staff. Um, uh, but I would say uh, that's certainly a much smaller, you're absolutely right. A much smaller number of calls each year. When we do hear from families. Um, we want to make sure they understand the the rights that their student has in terms of if they're experiencing mistreatment of any kind. Um, and sometimes people call us for exactly the right reason. Their child is experiencing bias-based conduct or sexual misconduct. Other times they're not sure to call and we can redirect them to the bullying hotline if that's the best resource. Or to the new parent helpline, which is such an important partner for our team. Um, so depending on the nature of um, the concern, we want to, we always want to make sure that that parent or guardian leaves the conversation very clear where they can get assistance with the issue they're raising. And we do sometimes have families call us wanting to do proactive work in their schools. Um, for example, I mentioned earlier, some of the affinity work that um, affinity group work that the Office of Equity partners with the Office of Recruitment, Cultivation and Diversity. Um, Rashaan Martin in particular. So I'm thinking of a project we did. Was it last year or the year before? Um, at the O'Brien where um, Rashaan and I worked together to support affinity groups where staff at the O'Brien um, met based on their racial identity. And we've done some of that work involving families and schools as well. So um, we do our best to partner with any parent who calls us to assist them either proactively or in responding to a concern that they have about their student.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Appreciate all of your work. Thank you very much.
So much.
Uh, yes, thank you for the presentation. Um, you know, come commenting the 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 great work. Um, that you all are doing. Um, and so I have a bunch of questions, um, but I'll try to pare it down. Um, I think my first is sort of related to one of the testimonies that we heard. Where, you know, clearly representation, you know, does make a difference. Um, and so I'm really curious as to how your office is sort of is thinking about linking around curricular supports because it's not just about, for example, handling cases in that sense, and I'm sure everyone knows that. It's also about being proactive and making sure that there's a diverse curriculum, a culturally responsive curriculum that from inception. Make sure that the 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 student, the teacher, administrators are all on the same page of what it means to be responsive, not tolerant. So uh, that's my first question. Um, just what, you know, what's your strategic thinking around that? Um, I'm also curious based upon the the figures that you've shown, like the distribution of incidents and you sort of spoke a little bit to that with wanting to create a dashboard. Um, and just really curious about where, if you're seeing clustering of certain either racially charged events or um, particularly issues of sexual misconduct, um, if you're still seeing that clustered out anywhere. And then my last question is around sort of the the backend or the accountability piece around um, trainings. I mean, trainings do a lot. I think speaking specifically to the implicit bias trainings um, for K-12 education for their teachers and staff. We know that trainings can support. We also know that you you know, that they can be ineffective if there's nothing on the backend that holds people accountable to those practices. So I'm wondering what kinds of supports you're offering school leaders to think about, how do you really evaluate this or evaluate the progress um, that you're hoping to see in staff, in staff behavior in 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 that? Um, and are you all looking like maybe in the in in the future to ask about? Um, how has, for example, 24/7 uh, reduced the number of incidents, particularly in a, in a school setting? And and that would also, I think, be very good for this body to see as well. So threw a lot at you, but you know, I'm I'm very, very curious.
I, I appreciate all of your excellent questions and I'm going to do my best to answer all of them. Um, and particularly the question about curriculum, if Chief Granson wants to add, um, more than welcome. Um, so I'll start with the curriculum piece. Um, so the district has been um, embedding culturally and linguistically sustaining curriculum um, in every aspect of instruction for many years now. Um, and that work rose out of the Office of Opportunity Gaps. The Office of Equity is less directly involved with instruction. Um, so that work was um, incubated in the Office of Opportunity Gaps and now is fully integrated into um, and our work in academics and also Chen wants to comment, I'd certainly welcome. Um, because that's exactly what should happen is the we we pilot, we develop, and then we embed throughout the district and it's certainly um, very important part of equitable literacy as well as every subject area to be thinking about how to be culturally sustaining. So I'm a cheerleader for that work, but not directly involved day to day. Where the Office of Equity becomes most involved with curriculum is more in the context of response to an incident and culture shifting in classrooms. So we have a whole directory of curriculum to address different incidents that may have occurred. So for example, um, if there is an incident in a middle school class where students were not completely thoughtful, that not everyone in the class celebrates Christmas. Then we might suggest certain texts or activities um, where students get to share what it's like at their house and maybe they celebrate Hanukkah, maybe they celebrate Kwanzaa. Maybe they also celebrate Three Kings Day. Maybe they're Muslim and this time of year they don't celebrate a holiday and it's good to create the space to talk about what it's like to not have a holiday this time of year. Um, so depending on what's occurred in the classroom, our role is to partner to directly address. Um, but the more broad embedding of culturally and linguistically sustaining curriculum would dwell more in academics.
Yep. Now, just quickly um, add to that, uh, that um, one of the things we're accomplishing um, with the network model uh, under Superintendent Skipper's leadership is try to uh, get our resources aligned in a way where each region has an equity and strategy manager that comes from the Ops opportunity gaps. Um, that these folks are cross-trained, have a number of different skill sets. Right now we have two moving towards hiring another one and we put some as investment requests um, for the upcoming um, fiscal year. But essentially those uh, equity and strategy managers are manager service thought partners in the network with the school superintendent uh, and work with the leaders in those regions. Um, in many cases, we're working with the school superintendent to say, let's work with these particular schools. The school superintendents know their schools best in terms of the needs and some of those data points that you mentioned. Um, and so we'll target those particular schools and work with uh, groups of teachers or the entire faculty. These are the same individuals also who are delivering the racial equity and leadership training um, that I mentioned earlier. And so that's where we sort of get the cross-fertilization and I can't um, understate the importance of the the partnership and relationship between the Office of Equity and Office of Opportunity Gaps.
Thank you, Chief Granson. Um, in terms of looking at the impacts of training, um, I think we have a variety of ways to do it. One of the things I've I've been in the field of of civil rights and diversity, equity and inclusion for many years now. And one of the hardest parts of measuring impact is that when you see numbers going up. Is it because we're failing to prevent these incidents? Or is it because people are feeling more able to come forward and report them? And it's a very imprecise science as a result. And so we try to pay attention to the trends and look for clues as to what the reason is for it. Um, so you know, I, prior to this role, I was the Director of Training at the Massachusetts Commission Against Discrimination for 15 years. And when I would go into a workplace or a school district, I would say after this training, you're going to see an increase in incidents. And it's not going to be because people's behavior got worse. It's going to be because the training created the awareness to report. So um, we continue to try to find ways to measure the impact of our training and other interventions. For example, we worked with the Office of Data and Accountability to ensure there are questions in the panorama surveys that go to students, families and staff that speak directly to whether they feel affirmed in their identities in their classrooms um, and workplaces. So we're looking for ways and you know, would certainly love to speak offline with any member of school committee about your ideas of how to continue to measure the effectiveness of what we do. It's a um, perennial conversation in my field, um, how to do that.
Mr. Carden Hernandez.
Juan, thank you so much um, for the, for the presentation this evening and of course, for your work and your team's work and and also uh, just hi honoring your celebration of them too, sort of across the hierarchy. And it's 10:20, so I'm fading. So Mike, I'm going to try to make a clear question. But I have three. The first, um, I'm curious how you are thinking about this. You know, we as a governing body are are coming off of one of the most difficult decisions, you know, of of school committee makes. And that was the closure of Mission Hill. And I'm curious, as you think about the data, how do you understand um, sort of uh, incidents versus systemic problems? And then where is the connective tissue within the organization to escalate what becomes systemic concerns? Um, and so we can see an increase in incidents and that may not mean it's systemic, right? Um, so like what sort of tools do you use to try to have a precision around sort of real sort of systemic issues within a school so that other resources are deployed? I think one of the things we learn uh, and understand for Mission Hill is like there was a breakdown in the system around addressing what seemed like systemic issues within a school community. So how does your often office get in the mix? What are your thoughts and and sort of anything that has shifted as a result of of our, of lessons learned?
Great. Yeah, well, this is a such an important question. Um, and it's one that I think about every day. Because ultimately, while of course, we want to assist every single individual student or employee that's been impacted by bias-based conduct. Ultimately, what we most want to do is stop it from ever happening again. And what are the reasons why it happens? What are the reasons why the numbers might go up at a particular school at a particular time? And those can vary tremendously. Um. I I'm thinking about an incident, obviously I can't talk about anything in detail, which is always a challenge with these reports, but in broad terms, I'm thinking about an incident that happened yesterday where a student did something that was uh, very unacceptable. And we quickly found out about the circumstances of that student's life that um, are just heartbreaking. We talk on my team a lot about how to maintain our compassion and keep our compassion and empathy going every day. It, when it sometimes feels like it's too much to hold. What's, when we hear, you know, about our young people, um, and sometimes our staff who are enduring circumstances that no human being should endure. So sometimes those roots have to do with a particular student's life story and not a systemic issue. But even with that individual student's life story, when you pull out and look at it from a thousand feet, their life story may have everything to do with income inequality. With the impacts of racism, with domestic violence, with um, uh, unmet mental health needs, uh, addiction, like these forces that um, are at play in society right now with particular ferocity. Um, and landing on our children and then comes the behavior. So there's that level. But in terms of, I think, where you're going with your question to do with schools that are working well or not working so well. Um, and classrooms that are working well and not working so well. It tends to happen that each school year, we start to notice trends right around this time of year. Where we can see that there are struggles happening in particular schools, particular classrooms. And I'm so grateful for the the strengthening of the regional system. And I thank the superintendent and others who have helped make that happen. So that we are very clear on who to turn to in the current um, structure to partner and say, are you seeing this? We are seeing this. What are you noticing? Where do you think the struggle is? So if we're seeing uh, a lot of issues in a particular uh, fifth grade. Is, does it have to do with a new educator? Does it have to do um, with a a rollout of inclusion where there hasn't been enough skills built? Does it have to do with a new school leader? Um, does it have to do with uh, understaffing because folks are out due to COVID? Um, so that's where these teams come into play. And just like I've got every single school leader on speed dial in my phone. I also have every operational leader and every school superintendent on speed dial on my phone. And we are coming together on a regular basis to compare notes and design interventions.
But I guess just to push a little bit further, what happens syst- on a systems level? And I think this is sort of what I'm thinking about. I'm thinking about Mission Hill as we're having this conversation and that's sort of as, that's as far as we can go, right? But like, are, what levers are in place? If it feels like the machine is not adequately addressing and does it leave your office and then where does it go? And like, how does that, how does the system work together? You know, to to, in this process of the handoff. Um, to ensure that there is to ensure that there is accountability around not just resolving incidents that are individual, but what becomes evident around this time of year around much more structural culture failures within a school?
Superintendent, do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, so it it, you know, it's 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 an excellent question because it sort of is the is some of the lessons learned as we kind of move forward. You know, from from Mission Hill, I think the checks and balances that that both Charles spoke about with the regional network and Becky speaking about the way that the communication is happening, both written and oral, is just a far stronger system than existed in the era that that happened. Additionally, there is a hierarchical way of reporting up. Both, I would say, not just on the equity issues that 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 Becky's speaking about, but also just safety issues. So there's because of how we're communicating with each other, myself included, and meeting like I meet with equity with Becky and with Charles on a regular basis. Things are getting brought to the top of the organization much quicker than they ever did before. And so I'll give you, for instance, if we see in a particular school, which we have this year, a particular school where there's a concentration of incidences, either a combination of safety or bullying or sexual misconduct, racial, whatever it might be. We we have a triage form of how we kind of start. And so that can start with the OL, the operations leader, you know, going there to assist the instructional superintendent going there. And we're continuing to monitor the data. If we see that that data is not going in the right direction, then we do almost a SWAT, which is we will all go to the school, work with that school leader. And it can range from student support, looking at particular students that might be struggling, identifying if they're missing supports themselves. At the high school level, sometimes it's students are very off track and they just don't see a path forward. They might need an educational option, looking at special education and looking at the supports that are in place for our students and IEPs. Looking at staff, you know, do we have a number of unfilled vacancies that we need to do another mini probable org and kind of reboot hiring? Because we've gotten more vacancies over a period of time. Does the school leader need additional coaching and mentoring? And then you start kind of employing other strategies. And those can be adding in, you know, everything up to an additional adult or an additional team or additional social workers. So that no matter what the the set of issues are, we're working toward helping to support that school in that situation. But with lots of eyes on in in a very methodical kind of manner. That's that didn't exist in that way before. I would also underscore something Becky said, because I think it's really important. I worry less about the schools that actually have stuff that's being reported. And I worry more about the schools from whom you never hear anything. And that and that is not to say that that means innately there's something wrong. But it can also be a sign, you know, that there could be a culture where it's just not getting reported. So so that is that part of us also in the regional model, knowing our schools so well that we drill down and make sure in those schools. So I I mean, I I I could go on about this, but I think it's a good question. And I just want to reassure that we have in place right now is safety net, safety net, safety net, safety net. Like, so that until we get the school, you know, stood up and and the students in a in a better place and the staff in a better place, we keep adding those resources in because there just are a lot of eyes and hands ready and willing to do that level of support.
Makes sense. That makes sense. The my final question is just around our work around special education. And I'm curious from you, Becky, specifically as, you know, we have all our talks about equity, we are a system that for a long time, current and past, has created an incredibly segregated environment for kids with disabilities. It we are in a place where we look like we're going to like accelerate towards inclusion in 2022 and start to think differently about what our classrooms look and feel like. At the same time, one, there's like implicit bias work that has to be done with educators around serving young folks with disabilities. So I'm just sort of curious where how that fits into your shop. Then there's the second piece that's much more pragmatic, which is about integrating classrooms, particularly with young folks who do, who are in growth zones around some of those social and pragmatic skills. And so you will see naturally an increase in incidence with students who are still working to develop those social pragmatic skills. So it becomes less just about the movement of bodies and also the training of people around how to support young folks who are in different growth zones, right? Like, I always say culture eats curriculum for breakfast, right? Like, and so like, what is going to happen structurally within the system? And it's part of your work and possibly part of the growth that you're trying to define for your team. But like, how does that live in the Office of Equity around the sort of implicit bias work? But also like the hard skill development around working with young people in integrated classrooms who have social pragmatic skill deficits or growth zones that need to be nurtured?
Yeah, thank you so much for centering that population that we sometimes don't talk about as often. In terms of our response work, our entire team is very cognizant that many of our students have disabilities that directly impact their impulse control and who may have IEPs that speak directly to that. And so we are very conscious of seeing the whole child when off track conduct is being reported. And I've talked some tonight about trauma as an underlying cause, but sometimes it's also, of course, a disability. So we're very conscious of that. And I've had many coaching conversations with teachers and school administrators about how do we explain in the class that this particular student is having a hard time with that? The the thought comes in their mind and we're all working really hard not to say the mean thoughts that come in our mind. But some of us have a harder time with not having it come out. So our team is very well trained about how to have those conversations. So that's on the response level. In terms of systemic issues around bias, for example, in labeling students or in placing them in sub separate classrooms, that would primarily be worked on by the Office of Opportunity Gaps. And Chief Grantson might want to comment. I have been involved particularly in my early years in the district. One of the first racial equity planning tools I ever completed was with special education around the emotionally impaired strand. And why was it that so many black and brown boys were landing there? So it's certainly an issue that I'm very aware of, but that would primarily because of its roots and instruction primarily fall in the Office of Opportunity Gaps work. Dr. Grantson, do you want to add?
Just quickly say, we have expertise in the Office of Opportunity Gaps around disproportionality in special education. Some folks who've had years teaching and leading in students with disabilities. And I think one of the models that we have that we're looking at, I mean, when you look at this work, it is expertise, complexity, complexity and capacity, right? So how do we find ourselves and as the ops opportunity gaps and equity almost in every space? And that's always a challenge. But the most recent place I think where it's we're gaining some traction is the inclusion working group. And a few of our members of our team have been a part of that group, pushing the thinking of the members of the team. And so post this release of the council's report, we're looking at how we now sort of mirror that same process with the Office of Special Education, especially as we get the new hires in that the superintendent mentioned earlier.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I I know I'm out of time, but I can't emphasize enough as we move into this next chapter as an organization, like the sort of need for this to be a cross functional work stream, right? Like, one, just because like, we all know acuity is higher. We saw the Surgeon General report. So like, we know that young people are having much much deeper and darker thoughts, and that leads to impulse control. And so how does that show up and how will that show up particularly in integrated classrooms? And how do we set students up for success so that they're not criminalized in those spaces? And so everyone is is able to have the skills to support that that particular piece of that young person's skill development? Okay, that's my thought.
Dr. Alkins?
I saw superintendent had her hand up, but I assume it was in response to.
Okay, sorry. So so I'm I'm trying to just think, I don't, I I I I could go much more in depth than this. But one of my concerns is that when we're talking about the Equity Office and we're thinking about all of the ways in which bias and discrimination present themselves, that we go as deeply as possible into the like, all parts of the organization where it can lie. And so in racial discrimination and bias, it's not just the reporting pieces, right? It is structurally, how does that represent itself in suspension and special education programming and differentials of opportunity? And, you know, what is offered in particular schools depending on demographic makeup and in our enrollment? So it just it has tenants in so many other areas. And I think we have so much more unpacking to do on this, right? That despite all the amazing work that our Equity Office is doing and 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 the district is supporting, we're just scratching the surface of this. And and similarly, as we start to make changes in what's embedded in policy when it comes to special education and we we sort of flip a policy into inclusion, we are going to have to deal with a similar set of issues of approaching PD curriculum and students being able to see themselves in in the curriculum, how conversations and discussions happen, the kind of training we provide our educators. Once we have students, you know, who traditionally have been in a substantially separate environment, now fully included in our schools. Same with LGBTQIA. As we start to dig into the policies and we start to really see where the bias and the barriers have 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 been laid. And and we start doing that, you know, kids vulnerability and opportunities for bullying and opportunities for segregation, all of those things pop more because we're bringing things to the surface. And so we have to be prepared as a district to to do the training, to to be willing to enter those hard conversations about what we're teaching, how we're teaching them and and to be able to, you know, staff and support our Equity Office, our academic office, our special education office, our our OL, you know, O M M E office to make sure that that work is successful because our students can be successful who have traditionally been marginalized because they're in one of one of the areas of vulnerability. And so I think that for me as a leader, I'm I'm trying to think about to prepare the ground for as we go into this next step with with inclusion, with LGBTQIA and consistently on identifying racial discrimination and bias. If that makes sense to to member Cadet Hernandez's question.
Okay. All right, Dr. Alkins, and then Mr. Mayda, and then Mr. O'Neill.
Yeah, I just had a really quick follow up question in regard to a figure like within the presentation itself, just making sure if if it's possible, could we, if you have a distribution of the 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 reports of bias based misconduct by students, but chronologically. So I knew we saw that from like fiscal year 18 through 22, but for sexual misconduct, but we hadn't seen it for the reports of bias based, because I'm actually curious on the particularly the trend of race related like misconduct and just seeing how that has either decreased or increased over time. Because I know if there's one thing that the district has been involved in, it's been involved in conversations that we surround race, both with students and with administrators and faculty. So I'd be interested to see how that trend has either stayed the same or, you know, and that sort of gives a somewhat of an indicator as the as to the efficacy of this work. So, yeah, that's if if somebody has that, I'd love to take a look at that.
I have some data in front of me, but it's not quite exactly what you're asking for. So I'm happy to provide that to you as with the caveat that I mentioned earlier that sometimes with these trends, they are more about increase in reporting than increase in off track conduct. So with that caveat, more than happy to provide that data to you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Mayda.
So I was wondering, basically, what the Office of Equity is doing to enhance support systems both in school? And I don't know how you would say this, but like boss damage. Just got the sign. But like, also people's personally, I don't exactly know how they would foster like their friends because that creates a sense of community and that all. So will.
You're breaking up a bit.
Of this as well as.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure if everybody could hear you, Diego, you were breaking up.
Y'all can't hear me.
No, can you? It says you're, yeah, okay.
I'll put it in the chat.
Okay, thank you. Mr. O'Neill, and then we'll come back to Diego's question.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and and hopefully Diego can put that on the chat so we can read it out that way. So thank you, Ms. Schuster, for that presentation and to school leader Davis and Dr. Eisen Smith as well. Great to hear their input. And it is something I hear echoed by school leaders. When I visit schools and talk with school leaders, I often ask about various departments in the bowling building and what are helpful and and what challenges for them? And equity more and more is lauded by school leaders, as we heard to today, who talk about it's very challenging issues and your team is always there and talk them through it. And so that is great to hear. I have two questions for you. And I'd like, if you don't mind, Ms. Schuster, ask them both, and then you can address them as you wish. The first is 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 an outgrowth from the Mission Hill report. And I wonder if, you know, something that we read in that Mission Hill report was, you know, areas that we do investigations or areas that could have had investigations. You know, there was kind of, hey, I'm doing my work in my lane. And then what happens beyond that isn't necessarily my challenge. And I'm not saying that was equity, but I'm asking that in you're doing really, really important work. You're both trying to train to avoid problems ahead of time. But you're also responding to, we're a large organization, we have a lot of students, we have a lot of families, we have a lot of staff. Right? And people know that they can call and if they are wronged and have it investigated. And so my question is, do you feel empowered? Do when the investigations? Do, when the investigations happen, do you feel empowered that actions are actually going to happen, either from Office of Human Capital or by school leaders, or you name it? So what, and and I'm asking that in light of the Mission Hill Report. And so because are there changes we as a policymaking board need to think about or the superintendent needs to think about? So that when wrongdoing is found, action actually happens? So that is my first question. The second question is kind of comes from a comment you made when you were looking at, and yes, you had warned us to expect these to go up, right? And as students were away and now they're back. But what is worrying you? When you look at all the various things you investigate, what is worrying you? And and this is an opportunity to say to this board, this is something you should be thinking about. Is it the mental health of our students? It is, is it how families are engaging sometimes? And obviously very positive ways, but sometimes in challenging ways for school leaders and staff. Is, you know, what is it that is that is keeping? The proverbial question, what is keeping you awake at right now? And and what should we be thinking about as a policymaking board based upon what you're seeing from the work that your team is doing?
Great, thank you so much. Yeah, so first in terms of do I feel empowered, does the Office of Equity feel empowered? I think the answer to that is absolutely yes. We have excellent relationships with people at every level of the organization. And I'm really pleased with the foundation that I've built with Superintendent Skipper in her months with the district, as well as the Chief of Staff. So that I I know I have access. I know that if there's something that they need to hear, I have absolutely no hesitation in communicating it. And I am confident that I will get the attention of those who need to be involved at the highest levels of the organization. And and that's true across the organizational chart. And I'll give a quick example. At one point a few years ago, a custodian came forward with concerns about why he had not been selected to be moved from a junior custodian to a senior custodian. And as we peeled back that issue, we discovered that there were serious barriers to some folks becoming senior custodians. And this year, for the first time, the Senior Custodian Test was it was offered in numerous languages. There was a study guide in multiple languages. There were disability accommodations available for employees who might have learning disabilities and taking the Senior Custodian Test. And we really, and I think this also goes back to the question about systemic versus individual intervention. We really uncovered systemic issues and we're thrilled with the results. We will see lots more custodians of color, including those for whom English is a second or third language, serving as senior custodians in our schools. So we have built deep relationships across the organization to leverage what we discover that might have started from an investigation of an individual concern and looking for those systemic issues and bringing them to the attention of those who can work with us to resolve them. And in terms of what keeps me up at night, besides what it's going to be like to be an empty nester. That's that's my individual BPS mom concern. Yeah, so one is definitely, and this is also sort of close to home, second example, but I am concerned about my team. The the weight that they have carried, in particular, in the last year and a half, is is above and beyond. And because we are dealing with some of our students and our employees who are hurting the most. And that is very, very difficult. And I want to have enough capacity in our team that I can really enthusiastically say, go on vacation, instead of feeling like, how are we going to get through that week without that person? So that's, those are the two sort of close to home. But in the bigger picture, I am concerned about the funding cliff that we may be facing when S R ends. I don't know what our legislature will do with the question one funding. But I, what if I had the opportunity to tell them? I hope that we will continue to see the financial resources that we need in the district. Because financial resources convert into caring relationships, having enough caring adults in every young person's life, that they are never on their own with their biggest struggles. And they have the supports they need to learn, to recover from trauma, to get back on track when they fall off track. I I would say that's my number one in the big picture. Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Schuster. I I have watched you grow this office and develop this office and grow it into a trusted resource within the district, and I thank you for your work.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, Dr. Grandson?
Thank you. I'd just like to quickly add and appreciate everything Ms. Schuster just shared. I think when we look at, and just referring back to the Mission Hill Report and the positioning of Equity work in the district, one of my first conversations with Superintendent Skipper and this past July was, you know, she was really clear, she wants Equity to be through line through the organization and and doesn't didn't want the work to be siloed. And so I appreciated that, and that was a breath of fresh air to hear. And I think as we move forward, I think when I think about this relationship between the proactive and the reactive work, right? And we think about how we can prevent even the Mission Hills of the world. And I think the idea is, when we think about things like the racial equity planning tool, how do we get to a point where the Division of Equity and Strategy, the Ops to Equity, Ops to Opportunity Gaps has the authority and has the the resources to be able to serve as that accountability mechanism on behalf of the Superintendent and the School Committee for our students and families? And so ideally, right, certain things wouldn't even make it to school committee, right? Unless it had that that thorough equity analysis. And I think that's that's what we're trying to get to. And that is one of the things that that keeps me up at night.
Thank you. Any any other comments or questions?
Chair, I'd like to respond to Mr. Mate's question in the chat.
Okay, great, thank you.
And Mr. Mate is asking about how the Office of Equity is focusing on support systems for students, both to address how they're impacted by bias based conduct or sexual misconduct, but also better yet to prevent it in the in the first place. And yes, we work very closely with the folks who are on the ground supporting students, our social workers. We frequently reach out to social workers to assist students with the both the impacts of of what we're investigating, but but better yet with preventing future incidents from happening. Because we know that the students engaged in that conduct are asking for help, that is what they're doing. So we work with social workers, we work with school psychologists, we work with coordinators of special education in school buildings. It's a common question that our office asks after an incident involving the child who is now being called a bully or who is engages engaged in a violation of BPS policy. We often ask, who is the adult in the building that they have the biggest connection to, regardless of their role? And try to team with that person to assist that young person and identify what additional supports are needed. And sometimes Principal Davis mentioned, sometimes we will recommend external resources and additional supports for a particular student or family, depending on what they're struggling with. We want to leave every situation we learn about it better than we found it. Even if it doesn't exactly fall in our purview or it doesn't rise to the level of a policy violation, we still want to give the support to the students involved that they need and make sure that those resources come their way.
Thank you.
Hope that answered your question.
Okay. You're okay, go ahead.
Yeah. One more thing. Is it working? So that's the schools. That's school support system. Are you, what about fostering environment where people at school can develop their own? I don't know.
You're breaking up again.
Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So I really appreciate the answer. I'd just also like to add on one small thing. Are you doing anything for specifically people fostering environment where people can create their own personal support systems?
I love that question, and I'm not sure that I have a lot of expertise in that area. I know that our Chief of Student Support is very much focused on fostering relationships between students as well as adults and students. Also, the work of our Office of Social and Emotional Learning is doing some great work in around relationship building between students. So that's work that I'm certainly encourage and support. I know how important it is, but I would say we're not directly involved in that work.
Okay, Diego, are you all right?
Tired.
I know, yeah. Yeah, it is just about eleven o'clock. And I knew this was going to be a long meeting, so I'm not going to prolong it. And I think we're losing some of our members who have fallen asleep on us here. Or are trying not to. So I'm I'm just going to ask one short question. Mine is really about the racial equity planning tool and about the Equity Round Tables. It hardens me over the years to start hearing people reference the racial equity planning tool more and more in their plan. Sometimes I think they're not always utilizing it the right way, but at least they're acknowledging that it has a place. How do we, you know, and I saw in your plan for this year, you were going to do sort of a modest amount of additional training, both on, you know, the the planning tool and encouraging Equity Round Tables. This, to me, seems to be some of the most important work that we can do, and the idea of getting everyone in every instance, whether it's parent groups, as they're trying to make their way through, you know, issues around, you know, school changes, whatever, you know, educators and even students, how, you know, and again, hearing you say you worry about your team. How big a team do we need to invest in in order to really make these tools part of the critical framework of this work within the district itself?
I'll give you my perspective briefly, and if Chief Grandson wants to add, that's very welcome. The main role that I play in the racial equity and leadership training is that I'm currently delivering the module about how to use the racial equity planning tool to every central office supervisor or manager. And we are well on our way to reaching our goal of a hundred percent participation. And we've created, it's a two hour workshop, and I use that word very specifically because we're not talking theoretically about how to use the tool. We are actually using the tool during the training session. Because I think sometimes people look at it and feel intimidated. I don't know how to do that, you know, where do you start, who has, who should be there? And they, they want to get it right, I know they do, but they need that hands on practice. So I've been really happy with how those that rollout has been going. And people are giving enthusiastic reports that they actually feel ready to facilitate the use of the tool going forward when they hadn't felt confident prior to the session. So that's my personal primary role in relation to further enhancing the frequency that the tools use as well as the quality. Because you're right, Chair, sometimes someone shares what they call a completed tool with me, and I'm like, no, that is not done correctly. So we're trying to get ahead of that and have people practice. And and we're giving them exemplars so they can see a well completed tool and how it compares to one that was more of a checkbox. So I think we're on our way to seeing an improvement in the the frequency of its use as well as quality. Chief Grandson, do you want to add to that?
I'll just briefly say, we have accelerated this work, thanks to Superintendent Skipper. So we just last month had a presentation to our chiefs and deputies, group executive team on the prototype that we've developed around a racial equity planning tool dashboard. And so we have an internal working dashboard, and we're trying to develop it to get it released in the spring. Because I think we have a lot of supports, as Becky just mentioned. And we're at the point, I think now of the the coupling, important coupling of support and accountability. And so, you know, my my broken record question for the last few years has been, what happens to me if I don't do the racial equity planning tool? And not that we want to be punitive, but we and and now we need to be able to answer that question. And so a district circulator is something we also have been developing around that as well.
Yeah, and my my final piece around the two is, how are we sharing that work with our partners?
So I'll quickly say there's some great examples of work with investors, for example, in the New Skills Boston. I saw the breakfast the other day, where they have, they intentionally funded time. They set aside time in the grant to fund time, staff time, to make sure that Equity was has been embedded throughout that entire process, right? I would say that's the the platinum version, right, of of partners really putting their money where their mouth is and really jumping in. And I think in other cases, we've done trainings at the partner's request. A lot of times when we talk about having the racial equity planning tool and equity analysis, when it comes to external entities, whether it be City Hall or another state agency or a partner, the question comes up, well, do we still have to do the racial planning tool? My answer is always yes, we should do it because it's a good practice.
Great, thank you. Thank you all, and thank you for this report, and thank you to your entire team for their critical work. And we look forward to hearing from you as the year goes on and and particularly looking forward to hearing about the work of the rest of the departments that are all part of the greater Equity Team. Thank you all. So we'll now move on to public comment on reports, Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, Chair. We have no speakers for public comment on reports.
Thank you. Any new business? If not, this concludes our business for the evening. The next virtual school committee meeting will take place next Wednesday, December fourteenth at five P M. If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the role?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lo Para?
Yes, Ben and Notus.
Ms. Palanca Garcia?
Yes, one night.
Mr. Tran? Mr. O'Neill?
Yes, good night, everyone.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes, thank you and have a good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Good night.